Go ahead and call this special workshop meeting to order. How to participate in the meeting, this meeting is being held in the council chambers, which are open for public attendance and participation. The meeting will also be livestreamed for public viewing, but not participation at the link identified in the agenda. Emailed comments sent and received by the city clerk at least 24 hours before the meeting were distributed to the city council prior to the meeting. Can I have roll call, please?
Mayor Kreschner.
Present.
Vice Mayor Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Boomgarden.
Here.
Councilmember Pescuali.
Here.
Councilmember Shaw.
Here.
Thank you. I've asked Chief Jesse Alexander to lead us in the Pledge of Legions.
The Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Welcome. We do have an agenda modification. We're moving public communications to the beginning of the meeting, so we're going to begin with public communications. Members of the public may address the city council concerning any item that has been described in the notice of the meeting. Do we have any comments from the public?
Okay. So it's red instead of green, like the other one. Thank you. So my name's Heather Essman. I am, as usual, not surprised that you would put this at the beginning. This was not online. There's no way for us to know what's in here. I don't know how we're supposed to respond to any of this, but fortunately, there's not a lot of people here from the public. It's basically just me complaining all the time. So when you get to approving this budget, I want you to know something. My daughter is very ill, and the only thing that really makes her happy was going to the dog parks. And we don't really have one. The one that's over there is always has big dogs in it, and they don't have any really way for her to be able to communicate with other people. She has social anxiety. She has a lot of issues, and she probably doesn't have long to live. So I started a long time ago trying to see if we could get a dog park in this community, something small and nice, something that we could be proud of. And I just want you to know that this is very important to me. That's why I even started down this whole road of being on the Parks and Rec Commission, because I wanted very much for her to be able to have that. And I know that we're trying to save our money and everything, but there was money allotted for that last year, and I would hate to see that disappear. I don't think she's going to make it until this park gets through. So are we going to name it after her, too? Do we have to wait until people die before this city does something? Collins Corner could have been put together a little faster. We had people from the community that would have donated money, but it took way too long. And we have people in this community that are willing to donate money to this, too, but I can't get ahold of the people at the parks, the friends of the parks, because for some reason, you look online, it's all controlled by the city. I don't know how to get in contact with these people. I don't know how to make this project work by myself, and I know that it's expensive, but it doesn't have to be. So please, when you're looking at this, just remember, there's a very young lady who would like to be able to communicate to people out there, and the only way she feels like she can do it is with her dog. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any further public communication, any public comments? Okay, seeing none. We'll go ahead and move to general item number one. Before I begin, I would like to acknowledge all the work that our city staff have done to get us here, and it's been noticed and it's been appreciated. Thank you. You've all spent a lot of time away from your families. I get it. So thank you for all the hard work that you put into this to get us where we are here. This is our fourth year of our Budget Ad Hoc, just to give you a little bit of a background, and that is to promote transparency within our community, to let them know that we are being responsible for the funds, the public funds. So I'm going to go ahead and pass the rest of this on to Councilmember Boomgarden.
Thank you, Mayor. To the members of the audience that showed up that aren't staff, thanks for coming. It's good to see some public interest in this item. As the mayor said, we owe a sincere amount of thanks to staff, all staff in the city, who have walked in this journey of the Budget Ad Hoc Committee for probably somewhere in a neighborhood of 30 to 40 hours at least, and that's before we get into this budget workshop, which, mind you, is the presentation. This is not the approval of the budget. This is a presentation of recommendations per the Ad Hoc Committee as appointed by the mayor of Uba City. The Budget Ad Hoc Committee was established approximately four years ago, just as another method by which the council could engage with staff on this journey of budgeting. That budget establishes goals and priorities, and then we take a look at the expenses and the revenues, and then we try to match all those things. And occasionally, we are able to meet most of our needs, and sometimes, when times get tough, we have to make tough decisions. And so as an Ad Hoc Committee member, for the last several years, take that responsibility extremely seriously. We have literally gone item by item, line by line, with the members of each of the departments and their staff. That doesn't mean that we, as an Ad Hoc Committee, are entirely 100% correct. We rely on our colleagues to vet our work as well, and certainly do not have any qualms with any questions and/or comments and/or modifications that you would make at this particular point in time or in the future. I think that it's important to note that on this four-year journey, two years of that was COVID-impacted, which means that this council at that time took a very fiscally conservative approach to expenditures. We budgeted as we felt like we needed, but then at the same time, we worked hand-in-hand with our staff to be very, very fiscally conservative. And as we emerge out of COVID now and are trying to restore those services, municipal services, that cities are obligated to provide, you will see that we have systematically been able to do that. But we'll also see that, once again, there's a lot of things in these that are needs that I believe the city would love if they had the revenues to support, to fund, but we were established to make some of those hard recommendations, and the mayor and myself, along with staff, are going to present to you tonight those recommendations. It wasn't easy work. It's never easy work. If we had all the money in the world, it would be easy work, but it's not. And so with that, I think that, again, our effort here is to be very fiscally responsible, understanding not only what is upon us for this current budget, but as we forecast for the future, those things that we professionally intuitively know are going to impact the city. And with that, I would turn it back to the mayor for the continuation of the meeting.
Thank you, councilman. Remember, that was very well said. We're going to move along to general item number one, Proposed Fiscal Budget 2023/2024, Operating Budget and Capital Improvement Project Budget presented by Spencer Morrison, Finance Director, Diana Pope, Accounting Manager, Chief Jesse Alexander, Fire Chief, Chief Ryan Baker, Police Chief, and Ben Moody, Public Works Director, Service Director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As you just said, we are presenting a review of the 2324 operating budget, and hopefully hit the major items that are going to help with your decision-making in the coming week before the June 6th, or as the adoption of June 6th. I'm going to start with my last slide first, just because sometimes it's nice to know where you're going on this journey, and so I'm going to start with my next step slide, and then I'll say it again at the end of my presentation. So the next steps will be in the, before the June 6th meeting, is to review the proposed budget document that you have in front of you, and hopefully you'll be able to get us questions back as soon as possible, this week, early next week, so that we have time to hopefully address your questions and concerns at the adoption meeting. And if you wish to have the document electronically, let us know, please, and we can always make sure to get that out there. In fact, I think it might be in the council share folder where you pick up agendas. So just with that in mind, did I miss anything? City Manager Langley.
You're planning to bring it to the June 6th council meeting for consideration for adoption.
So I want to be sure that you, just to highlight and have this slide handy, this is the council priorities slide. Quality of life, public safety, business-friendly, infrastructure, and fiscal responsibility. So if a question arises relating to this slide, we can always come back and look at it more closely. Do you want to show how the general fund budget allocations fall? About 63% are public safety. Two of the council's priorities are public safety and infrastructure maintenance, which would be kind of fallen to the quality of life, business-friendly, lots of different categories. And that is where little less than three-fourths of the city's general fund dollars are spent by departments. So if you look at Public Works, Police, and Fire. Percentages in the slide change only slightly from year to year, which is what you would expect, being that these are the long-term priorities of the city. We are expecting nearly $2 million surplus once we close the books on fiscal year 2223. We won't know that number exactly until probably August or September. However, this isn't an operating surplus per se, but rather unused reserves transferred into the general fund in July 2022, when transferred 3.2 million of unallocated CIP, general fund money. Any surplus funds will be used to adjust the healthy city's reserve first, and the remainder will return to unallocated general fund balance to be programmed by city council. We have ongoing supply chain issues with autos and pickup trucks, or we're still having lots of issues buying chemicals and with cost increases and such. Energy with natural gas and power prices either have gone up or are going up tremendously more. I put widgets in here, a little tongue-in-cheek, just to say that there's lots of other things impacted as well by supply chain issues. We're seeing cost increases of 25% to 50% routinely. It's kind of relegated us to, when available, replacing items just purely based on need. We aren't always able to make plan to purchases for replacements, and we are continuing to plan to use leases for cash flow purposes for the large items. Here's another slide that comes in the same vein. I just wanted to graphically see and show what, three very common things that we pay for, what the cost increases have been since 2012, '13. You can see that 3/4 ton pickup outpaces all of them by increase of percentage increase of cost. That's the green line, followed by labor and gas and electric over time. The budget process, departments identify needs to best serve the community and provide current year and year-end projections and communicate budget needs in the coming year, providing guidance on the direction to implement council's direction on community priorities. Finance works mostly behind the scenes to provide information to the departments, city manager, and city council. We gather projections and propose budgets for every division, calculate, evaluate, and verify available funds, and assemble everything gathered into a usable document. The Budget Ad Hoc Committee reviews, as Councilmember Boomgarden said, the city finances and practices and helps guide staff's recommendations to city council from a policymaker's perspective. And the city manager is charged with implementing the council's vision and ensuring tax and ratepayer dollars support the community in the manner they were intended. So on these slides, I've summarized the ad hoc recommendations and the items that they rejected. This is very, very, in the aggregate, and the departments will provide presentations after this section, and they'll get in more into detail. In the general fund, the ad hoc recommended 414,000 in material supplies and services, rejected material supplies and services requests in the amount of 672,400. They're recommending 113,000 personnel requests and rejected personnel requests of over 4.6 And the water fund recommended...
Mr. Morrison?
Yes?
Will you take questions as we're rolling along? If we have just...
Of course.
I just had one question. Make sure clarification. So the MSNS request was over a million total, and the ad hoc approved or recommended four and rejected six. Just to make sure I'm reading it correct.
Great way to look at it.
Okay, thanks.
I would like to follow up on that, if I may, Mr. Mayor. The recommended 414,000 in MSNS generally reflected increases in costs that Mr. Morrison talked about, PG&E, other utilities, fuel, liability insurance, et cetera. I would commend the departments that brought forward their requests, that they were very mindful of the financial situation, not only that exists in the city, but in the community as well. Thank you.
And I will be providing more detail after the department's presentations of the requests. So in the water fund, recommended 984,000. This does include a PG&E increase amount that is still being verified by the utilities team, but to be on the conservative side, make sure that our calculations, when we're calculating debt coverage ratio and the such on the pro forma, we included it, to be sure, so it's included here as well. 775,000 for the water treatment plant and 135,000 for lift pumps, and this is in anticipation of very steep industrial rates in the coming fiscal year. Waste Water also recommends $5,000 of capital acquisition, and I'll tell you what that is later in the presentation. Waste Water Fund recommends 254,000 in material supplies and services, and rejecting 22,000, recommending 106,000 in capital acquisition. Technologies Fund recommending 277,000 cap back and 119,800 in MSNS, rejecting 2 million, which we can cover later as well. And the Vehicle Replacement Fund recommending 1.7 million in capital acquisitions and rejecting 955,000. And just so you know, most of that is covered in the fund balance itself, so there's not a significant amount of funds being introduced into vehicle replacement. So same information, just graphically, by public safety, non-safety, and public works and utilities. So color-coded. CIP is, we had very large requests in CIP, and so it really makes the others bars very, very, very small. And so included in the ad hoc recommendations is, in the MSNS is, actually, there's a recommendation to reduce the council's professional development budget by 20,000, and reduce the city manager budget to help fund the UCAN program by 29,000, and reduce existing general fund CIP project balances to help other projects by 590,000. Same information, just without CIP, to help make the bars a little easier to see and understand the scale, the scale of the requests. Personnel, very small, about $1,007,000 of material supplies and service combined, and just over $2 million in capital acquisition requests. Similar format, this is just, these are the rejections. You can see that in CIP, we had quite a large amount of requests by the public safety, capital acquisition, and personnel, and the chiefs will be covering those details in their presentation. And similarly, I removed CIP, so you can help see the scale on personnel requests, MSNS, and capital acquisitions. And with that, we're going to move into the department requests by the department heads.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Jesse Alexander, I'm presenting on the Fire Department's proposed budget for this year. But before I get into that, I'd like to give you a little background on what we do and how we do it over at the Fire Department. YCFD's mission is to provide life safety, incident stabilization, property conservation, and environmental protection. And how we do that is by strategically staffing five stations located throughout the city. We provide fire, EMS, and rescue services, and when I say EMS, medical services, to the population of 70,000 that live in the city limits, and that's identified on this black line that goes around on this map. In addition to that, we provide, we are the primary fire service provider to this red area on the red line, and that is a fire district identified as CSAG. That's an additional 8,000 individuals. So in addition to the 78,000 people that we provide fire protection for, we also assist our neighboring agencies, assist in providing fire services to Sutter County and Uba County. An example was today that we were assisting Sutter County with an incident. In the fire service, we are in the time business. When you're having a medical emergency, a rescue, a vehicle accident, or a structural fire, every second counts. And our response times, based upon these strategic locations of our firehouses, our average response time is 5 minutes and 35 seconds. Those are very good response times, which allows us the opportunity to mitigate these incidents with a decrease on the impact of severity. So these are very important to us, and we really make a conscious effort to keep those Each one of those stations has a different call volume or calls for service. So on here, this slide is identifying a five-year average of each one of the stations and what their call volume is. What I'd like to point out is, what's identified is E1 on here, but that goes for Engine 1, which comes out of Firehouse Station 1. During this five-year period of time, they've had an increase of call volume by over 1,000 calls in that five period. That is a significant amount, so much so that there are over 3,500 calls per year at this time. This pie graph on the right identifies how that breaks out in regards to percentage. So at Station 1 there, the blue portion is at 31%, so almost a third of the call volume within the city is coming from Station 1. And what that comes into play is the graph that's on the left, and that's overlapping calls. What overlapping calls are, not all incidents just happen at once, and you don't have anything until the next one occurs. You can have multiple at the same time. And so 43% of the time last year, we had one incident going on, and at the exact same time, we had another incident going on. Today was a very good example, that at one point in time today, we had every single engine in the city committed due to separate incidents, so nothing else was available. So where that comes into play is when Engine 1 is on a call, due to that high call volume, another incident comes in in their district. So now you're pulling other apparatus from other firehouses in there to supplement those calls. This has increased response times, which you just heard me say is extremely important for us to have those times down, plus it leaves that fire district open for calls that are now going to affect that area, which then has the trickle effect of other apparatus coming in to supplement them. So it has a trickle-down effect all the way across. In regards to our overall call volume, in 2001, YCFD merged with Walton Fire Protection District, and at that time, that was five stations, five apparatus. So going from 2003 to this last year, we've had a 111% increase in call volume while maintaining the same number of fire stations and fire apparatus. How does that compare to other cities? So we've taken 15 fire departments and compared those to YCFD's numbers. The big ones I want to show on here here is, this has 2021 call volume and 2022 call volume and population. What jumps out is some of the higher population cities like Tracy, City of Napa, Davis, Rockland, things along those areas, that you can see our call volume is dramatically higher than some of those compared to that population. The graph here shows our current Fire Department org chart and our funded positions. In 2019, the National Fire Protection Agency, NFPA, issued their Fire Department profile, and what that does is it takes career firefighters per 1,000 population for all the career fire departments that are out there. And that showed the median staffing for populations between 50,000 and 99,000 in the West, west of the Continental Divide, is 1.5 firefighters per 1,000 in population. If we take that back and apply to our city limits of 70,000, that would be 73.5 firefighters to maintain the median average of career departments in the West. If we apply that to the CSAG area of 78,000, that's 81.9 firefighters. YCFD's current funded operational staff is 48 personnel, including battalion chiefs, so in comparison to median of career departments. So getting into our proposed 2324 budget, I'm going to discuss material supplies and services, also known as MSNS, personnel, capital acquisitions, and capital improvement projects. You're going to see on this slide some items identified in red and others in black, and what that is, is the ad hocs recommendations are in black, and the ones that are proposed for rejection are in red. So as we proceed through this, you'll see that. So just like the general public, we are also affected by the costs of inflation, and these first few items are exactly that. This is how we operationally do business. PG&E rates have gone up, so our heating and power increases. This is what we were coming in over budget on just this year, so we're applying those funds just to try to break even for next year. Same thing with our safety and first aid costs, which is vast majority of our EMS supplies. Those costs have skyrocketed. Same thing with our annual testing of ladders. One of the items that we did request to have added this portion is a special equipment servicing account. And what that was applied to our vehicle extrication equipment, also known as the jaws of life, and those need to be serviced and maintained yearly to make sure they're operating functionally, so we requested to have that account added. Item identified as weed abatement is we have weed abatement costs that are associated that come out of the Fire Department account. We do not have a current account for that, and so that was requested for that. And the next one is the gallery cancer testing. There's two big things that are killing firefighters right now. It's suicide and cancer. Two days ago was the three-year anniversary of a coworker I had that passed away from line-of-duty death of brain cancer. Worked with numerous firefighters that are on the job that have cancer. Cancer in the fire service, firefighters have a much higher elevated risk of cancer, and that's what that slide on the right is. So going to brain compared to the general public, 31% increased chance. The big ones on here are the blood cancers, lymphoma, multiple myeloma, at 51% to 53% chance, and testicular at 102%. Most cancers in the fire service are considered presumptive. And so what we're trying to look at is with this cancer screening test, is to identify those cancers as soon as possible, when they're in the stage one, stage two, before they get into three, especially four, so that we can decrease the impact on the personnel, the organization, and the department. This testing is, I'd say it's revolutionary. It started in 2021, and it's a blood test that tests for the top 50 cancers, specifically the ones that are fast-growing, that we currently do not have good screening methods for. And so that will, that will uncover, uncover the entire department in regards to that bloodborne testing. The next item is personnel outfitting. So when you hire a new individual, you have to outfit them with personal protective equipment, uniforms, things along those lines. There's a cost associated with that. And so you're going to see this in red. Please put a tag in it, because I'm going to come back and address this here on the next slide where you touch personnel costs. So in 2022, we were successful in applying for a Staffing for Fire and Emergency Response Grant, also known as SAFER. That was a $1.9 million grant that allowed us to hire three firefighters to go onto the truck. There was an unfunded adjustment associated with that, so that's what that request is for. In addition, you're going to see a little bit different color highlighted on the, that second bullet point, different colored red, and I'll touch on that in a second. But what that is, is when those were brought, those individuals brought on, we were, council graciously agreed to allow these individuals come on as permanent positions so that we could recruit and retain to get through the SAFER grant. However, there is not, there is no funding at the end of this, established for the end of the SAFER grant. So that's where that funds come from. Those would need to occur in fiscal year '25, '26, and that's why I highlighted in a different color, but that would be the cost of retaining. Those individuals could be used in an over-hire situation. However, the result of that would be decreasing our daily minimum staffing from 17 to 16 personnel. So I'm going to go all the way back a few slides where I discussed how busy Engine One is and that call volume. There are over 3,500 calls. When they start to get close to 4,000 calls per year, that's not going to be a sustainable model in regards to our fire and emergency response. We need to make a change to our model. And what that's going to need to do is we need to add another piece of apparatus for Station One's fire district, so that we're not pulling other engines in from other stations. And to do that, you need to add an engine, which would involve hiring three fire captains, three operators, and three additional firefighter positions. Those are the costs associated with that. And when you do bring on an engine, there's overtime costs associated with that, because you're going to have people that are going on leave, sick leave, vacation, workers' comp. So that's that last bullet point to make sure that I'm identifying all the costs associated with filling that position. And then going back where I said, put that tag in that item, outfitting is where the MSNS portion, to come back to these individuals through the PPE, the uniforms, radios, things along those lines. Getting into capital acquisitions, requesting a Ford F-250 utility vehicle. We also want to, we're always trying to multitask in the fire service, so it's a utility vehicle, but we'd also like it to be a backup battalion chief vehicles for when there's a goes down. Our current one is 20 years old. Estimated cost with installation, equipment, and all the things that go along with that is at $83,000 for nut cost. The next item is a Type III four-wheel-drive BME Wildland engine. Wildland engines are the ones that are going out, putting on the wildland fires, those type of things. They're not only just used outside of our area, but they're used for our vegetation fires in the river bottoms. Our current one is 20 years old. It's a two-wheel drive, which does create some issues. This is a CAL FIRE spec recommendation one that is a proven method, or product out there, and is a very, very good cost because it's attached to a CAL FIRE spec on there. Total outfitted cost with installation is $424,000. Build-out time for this is going to be 27 to 29 months. I just learned this last week, however, that starting on May 12th, BME has put a hold on all tags because they have fallen behind, just like many other manufacturing companies, and they need to get caught up. And so they are not receiving any additional orders at this time. If we had to pivot from this model, it is a significant cost associated with that. So the recommendation I was wanting to pursue was to, this time, hope that they lift that ban on those tag orders so that we can proceed with this product. Going back to that slide with personnel. So when you request personnel, you not only have to outfit them with the proper protective equipment, you also have to out them, outfit them with the apparatus associated with it. So this Type I fire engine, which is the same type engines that you see driving through most of our stations, estimated cost in installation equipment comes down to $955,000. You see down here is a build-up time of 36 months. There's a reason why some of these you see, hey, we're not at 4,000 right now on call volume, but between two and five years, we're going to be getting there or getting very close. And you could see, if not getting out in front on some of these lag time issues, 36 months from the time to place an order to the time you receive it is a very long time where you have to anticipate these, these needs associated with it. This is such a long buildup that I can't even guarantee that that cost is the accurate cost, because we're going to get into 2027 emission standards, which requires a whole new engine build. And Pierce has made it clear that those engines are still in production, and they do not have an exact cost of what that might change. So the whole industry is starting to see these, a backup of apparatus going through. Capital improvement projects. So I mentioned that we have five fire stations. We also have a fire admin facility. So that means that's six facilities that we're having to make sure that we maintain and repair. Due to years and years of deferred maintenance, trying to be extremely fiscally sound during hard budget times, that we've fallen behind in those areas. And as a result, we're trying to get caught up. And we're requesting $285,000 to deal with stucco repairs, painting, HVAC systems. Goodness, those are, those are expensive. And then we're also trying to get out in front in regards to the repairs that happen on apparatus, apparatus doors. As you saw from our call volume, those doors are going up and down very frequently throughout the day, and they break. And when they have a repair issue, those are costly repairs. So we're trying to be proactive, replace some of our old ones with new ones so that we can decrease those repair costs. Another capital improvement project is Fire Station Four Training Grounds, request of $20,000. In previous budget cycles, we were approved for the training tower. However, we needed additional $20,000 for a engineered concrete pad and forcible entry props to go along with that. And then finally, another capital improvement project is to replace Fire Station One. This was built in 1964, and the population of Yuba City in 1960 was 11,500 people. So this has outlived its useful life. Costs associated, approximate costs associated with this would be $20 million, and that would be involve demolition of the entire facility, temporary housing of the fire station personnel, and to build a new fire station that will house nine personnel and three apparatus. Currently, the station does not accommodate for a multi-station apparatus. When we upstaff on 4th of July, personnel have to sleep on recliners because we do not have a large enough dorm area. Plus, the dorm area is a common dorm, which is not best practice in today's standards. We've tried to go through numerous fixes, remodels. We've tried to do everything we can to make it a habitable station, but just projecting out where our future growth is, we need to accommodate two vehicles at this, along with the battalion chief rig. And are there any questions?
Chief Alexander, what would be the lead time on a new fire station?
It's difficult to determine at this time. Engineering, planning, approval, demolition, construction, it could be anywhere, just depending on availability of contractors, design. It could be anywhere from close to two years to possibly even into the three-year range. But all of these, including the personnel, just recruitment and retention, I'm sorry, hiring recruitment process takes time. Turnouts right now, which is a personal protective equipment that you wear in a structure fires, we're almost at six months now from the time we place an order to we receive those. Well, about a couple of years ago, three months would have been like, whoa, that's, that's a long time. So we're doubling those, just based upon manufacturing issues that are out there with most agencies.
Chief, thinking down the line, a few years, what is, if you had to implement all of this, because we see the black and the red, what would be your phase then, as far as, you know, if we, if we ordered trucks tomorrow, they're not going to be here for three years? What would you be looking at, bringing on new personnel? I'm sure it'd be similar to what we just did with the new truck that we had, we brought them on, but perfect world, we had an unlimited pocketbook, which obviously we don't, but how would that kind of, what kind of timeline would that roll out over the next three or four?
Well, for me, the quickest thing that's going to take the longest period of time to get started on that is the station and apparatus. Long lead times with unforeseen hiccups that could be associated with that. So we're not sure whether it's going to be two or five years before that Engine One starts to hit that 4,000 call volume. So the ones that we can get out in front and start chipping away would be the biggest. The personnel outfitting, that can be the shortest, because we just kind of start breaking down a three-year, a two-year, and then down to that six-month range. The equipment would be the ladder portion, and then in the middle would be the personnel, just to get started.
I, I know we don't have $20 million laying around unless you, you have a Swiss bank account that we don't know about.
No.
So, okay. Mark, when we were back at cap to cap and we were on the public safety team, there was the, the Firehouse grants.
Brick, the brick?
Yeah, the brick. How long, I mean, I know they're hard to get. I'm just trying to think timeline here, because we don't have $20 million. So if, if you go through that process, do you have any idea how long that process is as well?
I don't, but I do know, based upon the interaction back in DC, was, it wasn't clear that the brick would have fire stations even eligible. So that was the push was, you know, with all the, we're not alone in Yuba City in regards to old facilities that, that require either a complete renovation or significant rehab. And so what's happening at the federal level is an opportunity, hopefully, to be able to be included in this, this program called BRIC, which has to do with getting federal funding to help with these fire station and other public building rehabs. So at this point, I wouldn't even hazard a guess. I'm not even sure we're eligible to apply.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we'll be talking about the Police Department's fiscal year '23, '24 funding request. Also with me tonight is Officer Troy Kosky, one of our two homeless liaison officers. He'll be discussing kind of a day in the life of Officer Kosky, kind of at the beginning of the presentation, and then a little bit about who he works with, with both in the city and our partnering teams, as well as the organizations he works with within the county, as well as Yuba County. So a little bit of background about the PD. Our current staffing levels, we have 66 of 68 sworn officer positions filled. We're expecting two retirements within the next, call it, 60 days, one at the end of this month, and then one on July 15th. We have 10 of 15 dispatch positions filled, six of CSO positions of our seven are filled, and one is in the medical screening, and we have a expected start date for that individual coming up, probably in about four weeks. And our records unit is fully staffed. We do have one retirement coming forward in August, and we'll look to see how we're going to fill that position. On the, on the left is kind of a breakdown of our organization with the two divisions that we have and all the people that work in operations and support services. So now I'll let Officer Kosky talk about our homeless efforts.
Good evening. So I've been the homeless officer for about three years, started in June 2020, excuse me, January 2020. We recently brought on Officer Randala as my second partner, and we're staggering our shifts so that we can cover six days a week, up until seven in the evening for folks. Our daily activities, as we go out every day, we meet with the homeless, we're proactive on that, we provide outreach, education, and enforcement. Whenever we're out, we're always trying to get the homeless to move themselves from being homeless into, get housing. And during that time, it's, they're, they have very difficult time doing simple tasks. The different departments that we work with, within the city, we work with Code Enforcement, Public Works, Parks and Rec, the Fire Department, and then some of the other agencies that we're working with, work very closely with Sutter County Sheriff's Department. Deputy Lee Collin is their homeless liaison officer, and we spend a lot of time together in our areas in the river bottoms, and then he will come assist me in the city if, if it's needed. And we do have actually a decent portion of the river bottoms that's Yuba City property, both on this side of the river and the east side of the river where our sewer ponds are. And we've had two large cleanups in those areas that we worked together. All of our Public Works units were out there with tractors and bulldozers and picking up and removing trash to keep that area free for the citizens. Two of the other main people that I, we work with is the Heart Team and the Eye Care Team. The Eye Care Team is, was created to help move those people with mental health issues to get them to accept mental health services. They can help provide them rides. And then the Heart Team is an outreach team that's employed by Sutter Yuba Mental Health, and there are three folks that are there, and they do the same thing. Their outreach, we meet together, I have them one day a week typically is what I have them over here. They're dividing their time between both counties or law enforcement agencies, and then their own duties. This is just an example of some of the structures that we've had to remove from the river bottoms. This was our property down south of Shanghai Bend. And again, this is a lot of effort by all of our agencies to clean this. And this is on Union Pacific River property, there at Gray Avenue, kind of behind Hands of Hope, and we partner with them to abate this and remove that. Luckily, we don't see too many of those large camps because of our proactive activities. The calls for service that we had from April '22 to April 2023, 36,725 calls, and those are transient-related calls. So about 10.7% of the total calls for service for us. And these calls do, do not include our, any drunk person or one to be removed or disturbance that may actually end up being a homeless person. And as you can see, that our calls, transient-related calls from 2020, 2021, and into 2023 have increased, and that's from bringing on our second officer. We see a lot of that as our proactivity, is as we go out with a person, then that's also counted as a transient call. The homeless outreach funding, again, these are in red, so this is recommended to be rejected in the, the budget. Some of the things that, that I see from my three years of being in this position, some things that we can help move these homeless, is to get more assistance, getting them to appointments, to make appointments, and somebody that's going to be in the city instead of me waiting for a week to have the heart come back or trying to get them to come back. So if we have somebody that's employed by the city and accountable to us, that's attached to our unit, they can make those things happen immediately. Because getting a homeless person to do a simple task is, is just difficult at best sometimes with them. The homeless liaison social worker, what they could do is they could attend the meetings, which was worker, um, what they could do is they could attend the meetings, um, which would actually free me up to have a lot more time out on the street, and they can work with the other county agencies, um, work with Heart, and work with the street nurse, and try to create, um, a pathway for those homeless people to get into those different facilities that there are available to them. Uh, the other thing I would like to do is attach a CSO, um, type officer, a community service officer, um, to the, uh, homeless liaison officer position, and they could provide rides, actually help those people set up appointments. Again, when, if Kush, uh, Officer Randala and I are out and we need someone right away, we can call them, they can come over, they can take them to their ride, take them to the appointment, they can help them set up appointments. Um, simple things as far as getting a driver's license. Our homeless people can get a voucher for a free ID, but then having the ability to get to the DMV, sit through that process, or even understand it, is somewhat difficult because there are mental health and drug addiction problems. A vehicle basically for the CSO to transport, um, the homeless people to and from their appointments.
So, all of this, uh, work that Troy and all the other folks within the city are doing costs money, right? So there, there's sometimes a, a narrative out there that exists that the city doesn't spend any resources on the homeless issue. Um, I, I beg to differ with that narrative. Uh, we have two dedicated homeless liaison officers that run us $378,000. Um, just our calls for service, uh, come up with about $90 per call based upon two officer response on an average of a half an hour of dealing with these particular issues to about $355,000. Um, so in the, getting the numbers from Chief Alexander, 102, um, suspected fires causing property damage, uh, in the amount of $75,000. And then the cost for his personnel to respond to 836 related calls for service is about $288,000. Development Services, they estimate, uh, their code enforcement team spends about half of, uh, a year's salary, uh, for code enforcement to deal with related issues. Fortunately, we've applied for and attained, uh, abatement and cleanup grants for about a hundred thousand, so about $150,000 in funds is there. Our Public Works, uh, their streets crew, uh, with cleaning, uh, up camps and assisting Troy and Sutter County in camp cleanup and removal for labor, about $160,000, and vehicle and related equipment for about $50,000. And then the city electrician has costs of somewhere around $20,000 for damage created and vandalism repairs to, uh, city infrastructure throughout the city. So there are about $230,000, um, in Public Works. So getting down to the, the bottom line, it's about $1.4 million of, uh, city dollars that are spent in addressing, uh, these issues. Any questions, uh, related to homeless before we transition?
Hey, through the mayor, um, chief, can you, of all the, of all the different calls that your agency responds to, what, where does home, calls for, or interacting with the homeless, where does that land? Is it in the top five, top three, top 10?
It, it's definitely in the top five because like Troy, uh, talked about, that, that bigger number, that was our total calls for service, that 36,000 and some change. And so, uh, a lot of, you know, our intoxicated persons and/or, um, you know, a lot of the, what'll start as a medical aid, as an unresponsive person ends up being, um, someone under the influence and/or intoxicated. Um, and then, and then so we really, it, those are hard to quantify. And so it's within the top five. And if we, it'd take a lot of digging, but it would probably be really in the top three.
That's fine. I, I just, you hear about what keeps your folks busy beyond just, um, Troy and Kush, is your other officers are dealing with that on a daily basis as well. I, I think the other question I had was on the abatement grant, um, that grant is really, uh, a, a good portion of that is cleaning up within the county of Sutter, not just the city of Yuba City. Isn't that correct?
Uh, yeah, Sacramento Conservation Corps, um, is actually for the Federal River Parkway. So yes, there is some, that is, um, a lot for Sutter County.
Okay.
And, um, that's Eric Ball from Code Enforcement, works with Deputy DeCanta to work that out.
Okay, thanks. And, and I guess if, if the narrative is, is that the city isn't, isn't stepping up to the plate, I guess, uh, we need to probably at some point point out what we have contributed to the Regional Housing Authority and others for, uh, housing as well. But anyway, that's another story for another day. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Chief, I don't have a question, but I just wanted to acknowledge, and we're talking homeless specifically now, but acknowledge the work that you all are doing, uh, Troy and your partner. Um, you're doing, definitely doing a good job with what you have. I did notice some of those very good ideas that would be very effective were in red, the vehicle and the social worker, et cetera, which is unfortunate, and that's what, uh, that's where these guys had to make the tough decisions because we're simply not out of money to go around with all the, and these aren't even wants, they're needs. Not only our need, our, our, our needs, but the community's needs to try to, try to put a, a bigger dent and hopefully a solution to our homeless issues around here. So, um, I just want to acknowledge that, um, you're doing a great job with what you have. We wish that you could have more, and, uh, hopefully that'll, that'll happen sometime. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yeah, uh, just a couple more questions to reiterate. Uh, Officer Kosky, thank you for the work you guys do, first of all, because I've seen a difference throughout the community with having, you know, dedicated homeless liaison officers. So that's apparent. But chief, if, if we were to approve the things that are in red now or in the future, I mean, how much greater impact do you think that would have in dealing with the problem? Because it, it's, it's not just a plight problem, it's, it's a public safety issue that we have going on with our homeless population, as you've alluded to, because they cross over between drug addiction and, and trespassing and confrontations and stuff. So by adding those, I believe it was two positions that you had up there, what kind of impact would that have?
So i- in talking with Troy and, and staff, th- this population is very volatile, right? I mean, they're in a, in a, in a fight for their life, for lack of, of better terms. And so they're, they unfortunately don't have the ability to, to long-term plan. And so if you can get these folks and, and they have the desire at that given moment that, yes, I want to seek whatever resource it is, by having our own, uh, in-house, uh, social worker that is involved in those programs, attending those meetings that Troy alluded to, knowing where there, there's beds available for folks that want to get into a program, get help, um, we would have that ability. Right now, with, with the Heart Team and the Care, that, they're, they're, uh, shared between four agencies and two counties. So, you know, um, they're not going to be right there to beck and call. They could be in Yuba County assisting there. And so you, you have to be able to immediately impact these folks in a positive manner for, to, to get traction with them. And so, hey, I'll meet you back here tomorrow at 8:00 AM. That's not going to work. Uh, and so with a program that, that we'd like to get implemented, we have immediacy, they know, they can, uh, do their own research to find different programs that work for folks, um, and, and be able to immediately assist them.
Okay.
So to resolve the issues that a bottomless pit?
As far as?
Their issues. Resolving those issues is the key.
Right.
Of getting a, a bite out of this.
Right.
Otherwise, we just keep throwing money after money after money after money.
Yeah, they, we, we have to figure out the, you know, if somebody had that magic pill of what is the cause of this or what is the solution, you know, they'd be really, really rich. Uh, so yeah, I mean, you know, um, there, there's basic humanitarian needs that I think that we need to, you know, be a part of socially and, and, and for our community. Uh, but yeah, we, we need to get to the, to the root of the problem.
Percentage-wise of people that are offered help, who bites on it?
Troy?
Um, very few. Um, and that's the thing with this position and the Heart and the Eye Care, is we just have to keep offering. Um, at some point, when they're ready, then they're, you know, we have to grab that, as the chief said. Um, and that's the problem I'm seeing right now is that when they're ready, I have to try and contact somebody else to get, kind of move that next step, because I don't have that person really available. So, and yeah, so it's kind of like we push them from this place to that place. Um, I mean, and the chief said it's the basic needs of nutrition. I think our social worker could work on working with our two other agencies as far as their health, getting some regular nutrition, getting the different program for where they can maybe stay, and, and starting a regular routine, kind of like a, a life routine. Utilize Hands of Hope more, their shower and their laundry facilities.
Thank you. Um, Officer Kosky, uh, just, just to piggyback on a part of a conversation you and I had the other day, uh, you did mention that, um, how impactful it would be just to get five individuals, um, off the street.
Yes, I, I think that, um, as other folks see programs work, then they're, they want to get more involved, and so it's like our Better Way. Um, there are a lot of people that want in, want to get into Better Way now, but because it's limited on its, um, size, it's tough to get somebody new in there. And, um, I, I think that's going to work. And again, for downtown, we've had some folks down there that, uh, used to hang out, uh, down the Downtown Business Association on Plume Street. Um, three of them created a lot of problems down there, were attacking people, um, they were arrested, so they're going to be going to state facilities for, uh, mental health issues, and, um, you can see a big difference just down on Plume Street, just by three being gone.
Through the mayor.
Yeah.
I'd like to add one more thing with the, uh, community services officer. Having that person available to also coordinate with Public Works on the cleanup would then free up, uh, our code enforcement officer to be able to focus on other code enforcement issues within the city.
Well, thank you, gentlemen. Anything else on homeless related? All right, uh, next, we're going to kind of transition into, uh, personnel requests. Uh, these are our, uh, current police beats, uh, within the city of Yuba City. Uh, I'd like to thank Sharon Lyden for hooking me up with this graphic. It was far better than my picture of my computer screen that I tried to insert, it didn't really work. Uh, so we currently have five existing police beats. That's, uh, somehow there's a pointer on this, but I can't figure out. If anyone's going to have technical difficulties, it's me. All right, so we have our existing police beat one, uh, two, three, four, and five, kind of in a clockwise, uh, rotation around the city. Um, this would be what would be, um, the Yuba City Police Department's proposed Beat Six. And this is an area, uh, south of Franklin, um, down to Bog Road, um, and out, um, to Township, um, on the west side of the city. Currently, that's, uh, patrolled by the Sutter County Sheriff's Department. Uh, we've recently annexed some other areas on the other side of it, uh, part of the Bog Stewart Master Tax Exchange that the city actually does provide police services to. But everything, you know, west of Highway 99 is part of the Master Tax Exchange Agreement from 2000, uh, when that Walton Annexation was brought into the city. So, I, I'm sure you as council members, and I hear about it, uh, Sheriff Barnes hears about it, is why do I live in the city and why am I not getting police services from the city of Yuba City? Um, it all goes back to that Master Tax Exchange Agreement. Um, none of us have that magic wand to independently change the rules that were established in that Master Tax Exchange Agreement. Um, and so part of that is, you know, we have to reach a certain population threshold of rooftops in that annexed area before there's triggering mechanisms that automatically revert police services to the, uh, Yuba City Police Department. Uh, so currently, the city pays the county, um, sum of money to provide law enforcement services to that, uh, Walton Annex, Happy Park, whatever you want to call it, area. So, our proposal would be, um, part of that agreement, I want to hit on too, there's some language, uh, that, about taking existing sheriff's office employees and bringing them over here. So there's a lot of things in that agreement that we're going to have to get worked out, um, going forward before, uh, that this could ever happen. So, to take over, uh, that area, which would be the proposed, uh, Yuba City Police Beat Six, would be six officers inclusive of a K-9 officer, uh, two dispatchers, and one community service officer. Notice those are in red as they were rejected, uh, by the ad hoc committee. So, the six officers are about 1.1 million, the two dispatchers about $250,000, and one community service officer is $111,000. Again, uh, four, uh, police vehicles at $89,000 each, and I have some slides to talk about the cost of patrol cars at the end of my presentation, and then safety equipment, uh, for the folks at about $75,000. Total initial cost of 1.9, um, and ongoing costs of about 1.5 a year, uh, going forward. So I'll entertain any questions about that at this time. All right, the next, uh, item, uh, from the police department will be capital acquisition requests, and those are for patrol vehicles. Um, we're requesting, um, kind of an unprecedented number of patrol cars in this budget year, but we're kind of in unprecedented times when it, as it relates to getting police vehicles and equipment related to police vehicles. We're basically, um, requesting to purchase two years' worth of police vehicles. Uh, we have cars that we ordered last spring that will not go in production until August of this year, and they're still not giving us an arrival date of when we're going to receive those cars. Uh, we had, uh, several pickups ordered, um, and we finally are putting the first one on the road tomorrow, Troy. So, and that took well over a year and a half for that to happen. So, uh, that, that's the request for the eight patrol cars. We're also requesting to, um, two vehicles that are complete, uh, builds, and so that's why the cost is a little higher, uh, because they're, uh, replacing extremely outdated, uh, Ford Explorer-type vehicles, um, to the newer patrol cars that we're buying. And so those are about $178,000, and those are for our school resource officers. They're driving vehicles that were previously offline, but we were able to put them back together enough that we could use them because they're not being used 24/7 in a patrol fashion. So why's a patrol car cost so much money? Uh, $47,000 for the car, um, and the equipment is about $42,000. That's a computer, a radio, radar, in-car camera, emergency lighting, and, uh, installation of all that equipment. So the last thing we're looking at is a CIP project at the police station, and that's, uh, it has an estimated cost of $815,000, and that's for a, um, large metal building. Uh, we have $295,000 in program CIP funds already accumulated. We're proposing to use $140,000 in, uh, cops funding, and then $140,000 out of our suspended traffic offender program to, um, help bridge the gap in the funding that we're short. And so we'll need an additional allocation of $240,000, and that has been recommended, as well as the vehicles, by the ad hoc committee. So the purpose of that, um, one of the purposes of that is for bulk evidence storage. Uh, when Troy and the other folks, uh, when we encounter, um, folks and we have to arrest them and are transported or to the hospital or, or things like that, they have a lot of stuff, we have to maintain that stuff sometimes for up to 90 days. And so we have to keep it in good order, and so we need a facility that will do that. So with that, I'll entertain any questions.
Chief, what's the approximate, uh, lead time on those vehicles if we would move forward with them today? Chief, what's the approximate, uh, lead time on those vehicles if we would move forward with them today?
Uh, I, I don't, they can't, I, I would say another year to a year and a half.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Wait, wait, wait.
It looks to me that we need to court some businesses that equip some emergency service equipment and vehicles to our community. Cause it seems like a going business to me.
I would agree.
We, we have a local one that we've used for many years.
Do they, uh, do they supply other agencies in, in the area? I mean, it's, it looks like a very lucrative business.
Yeah. Yes. So we have, we actually have a couple, uh, cop shop installations who's, um, won the award from the city for many years. Uh, and then, uh, Sutter Buttes Communication also has gotten back into equipping emergency vehicles. So we have a couple of different options.
Uh, chief, that, um, number for the equipment, that, that would also, that was an inclusive list, right? Cause I, you have specialized bumpers, you have weapons, security systems, cages, a lot more.
Just a ton of things that go.
Yeah. You can go on and on almost. There's a lot more to that, but it is expensive.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief. Thank you.
All right. So, uh, good evening, mayor, members of the city council. So, uh, Ben Moody, I'm your public works and development services director. So I'm going to run you through, um, public works department, um, and focus really on roads and utilities for the fiscal year 22, 20, 23, 24 budget. So the format, um, I'm going to start with roads and, and work through the streets operating budget with the material supplies and services, position upgrades, additions and changes and capital acquisitions. And then I'll get into needs and then work through the utilities budgets. So please feel free to hit me up with any questions as we work through it. So I'm a little scope on the streets responsibility. So this is probably one of our most versatile team with the city. Um, the, in the, in the division really is responsible to maintain rehabilitate city streets. We have over 510 lane miles of roadway. And so 12-foot lane each side of the road, um, some are wider. Um, you know, if you get to Bridge Street or some of our arterials on Garden Highway, um, but so, so this is a conservative number. Um, and with that, we're doing potholes, crack repairs, um, you know, every time there's a utility trench, um, associated with the city water sewer, um, there's a team that's in charge of that with funding that's required. Sidewalks, um, cost for signals and streetlights, storm grange facilities, ponds, pump stations. Um, and then just emergency callouts with, um, with those calls for emergency services. If we need to perform traffic control, um, cleanup for encampments, um, uh, you name it with street sweeping and weed abatement that goes into this division. And so, um, at a high level, this is, this is the key funding sources for, um, streets. It's about 5.7, five and a half to $6 million a year is what we typically come in. So, um, when you're pumping gas, um, it's a complicated system on how it comes back to the city. Uh, it's really broken down into some gas taxes that are about 1.9 million. Transportation Development Act funds is a quarter cent. It comes off the, the sales tax. And it, it's, it's allocated based off of, uh, a formula, what's remaining after transit. And then you have the recent RMRA, so the SB one bill that passed a few years back that has to do with registration and additional costs. Um, a gas tax inflator that's on there. That's a, that's right around 1.3 to 1.5 million dollars right now that's allocated. Um, and then we have some franchise fees that come through from recology. So of that, this is real general, uh, typical expenditures. And so where the funding goes, so we have six million comes in, two million comes off the top right away for operations. So that's, that's basically the cost for, um, power, um, cost for, um, the division, the, the team, um, the labor for them to go out there, the, the, some of the vehicle costs. And then you have, um, uh, so this is a big one I'm going to highlight here and then come back to it. And then these two, the 43%, 17%, really this is the, this is road projects that are specific. And this, this is what we annually, um, basically budget to, for road maintenance. And then we have some miscellaneous small items that tally up to about $500,000 a year for necessary traffic signal, maintenance, repair, drainage work that, that goes on, um, with some sidewalks and striping. I'd love to see all of those increased, but this is typically how we allocate the money. And so at a real high level, um, on that, on, on some of this funding that comes in, we're, we're successful grants. And so, um, so recently we were just awarded a, a $4.3 million grant for Garden Highway. And we're working on a substantial grant similar for Walton. And so with those, they require matches. So they require matching funds. And so, so of, of the annual allocation, we have to put money aside to match those projects. And so that's where with Bridge Street, with Walton, with Garden Highway, that's where it's really project specific. And it's not necessarily a straight road maintenance where you have the road maintenance where you're out slurry ceiling. Um, you know, doing digouts, doing real repairs and restoration service treatments. And that's where this million, million and a half comes in a year that we program. So material supplies and the services, the budget for the team is 950,000. Um, this year, um, really no changes. Um, we, with, we understand that asphalt continues to go up, costs continue to go up. Um, we stayed within our material services supplies budget. We're just asking to switch 10,000 from tools to weed abatement. So the cost for recontract redebatement, um, services. And, and so in order to align that budget item, we ask to transfer it. And then salary and benefits. And so this is that 1.2 million dollar number for 11 budget personnel. So we're fully staffed currently. And then I want to highlight this number right here in red. So 316,000 annually. And that's what was requested. And that comes from, um, last year, staff coordinated a, um, a homeless workshop for, for the city council. And, and out of that came a request for a beautification team. It, it was, it was a request internal about what could help, um, you know, help as far as, is instead of using the team for encampments and cleanup, the, those 11 budgeted personnel could focus on potholes and sidewalk repairs. And then have a team of people that are focused on encampments, uh, cleanup, graffiti, those type of items. And so that's where that request from, from this clean team, beautification team. And then you'll see a number on the next slide that's based on where that came from. So capital acquisition requests, um, the, the large number here, the 195K really it has to do with our dump truck. And so there's three trump, dump trucks, um, out of the maintenance yard. And, and basically they're, they're phasing out because of air quality standards. And so fragment as of next year, they'll be out of compliance. It's a 17-year-old truck, um, that in order to be in compliance in, in the timeline to order it, it's a highly used truck for, um, uses from everything from hauling equipment day to day with, and bringing material to the job. So it's key to the department. Um, we're requesting to utilize vehicle replacement funds and then bring in one-time money, 27,000 to complete the purchase. And then in red, you see the $44,000 was a, as a dump trailer that was associated with the clean team. That would basically it, 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 um, if you went with the trailer, um, Save Love has some similar. And so you would connect it to the truck, you bring the trailer, but it has a, um, an attachment on the trailer that, um, you could use to pick up, um, debris. So you're not having to bring two trucks to each site. You could bring the trailer and then two trucks with one haul, hauling equipment. You would just bring one truck hauling the equipment, hauling the trailer. That makes sense. And so these are associated costs with the clean team. So pavement condition. So I want to get into, so I just went through the operating budget. And so what we have here is, is I want to hit on the unfunded need based on our roads. And so this is, this is a busy, um, view and it's really just meant to articulate that the way we manage our, um, our pavement management system in the city. And so we have a software system that has decision trees and we, uh, as far as what treatment methods we're using for what condition the road is in. And then it breaks down each segment of road in the city by individual segments. And then, and then it tallies it up. And so just to highlight, it breaks Butte House Road down into various segments and, and it's in need of about $5 million in repair. You got Walton Avenue, about 3.3 for this section above here. You have Franklin Avenue that, uh, you know, it, it tallies this up. And so I just want to highlight that's, that's how the city staff, how we manage and how we proactively look. Okay. Where can we, with that budgeted amount, that $1 million that I said we put away each year for this type of maintenance? How do we program that at the best use to maximize it? So what you're looking at here is the pavement condition index. And so this is a, um, industry standard as far as how you rate roads. So a green is good, 70 to 100, 50 to 70, you're in this fair range. And then you drop below 50, start getting into poor and very poor. And so as of 2023, our software saying, telling us we're at 54. So we're in this fair, right in about the middle of the fair, um, and trending downward. As of, um, 2019, when we, um, last did a, a full, um, survey of our roads, we were about a 61. And then, and so over this last four-year period, we've dropped from a 61 to a 54. So just, um, high level breakout of the roads, our arterials, so your, your Walton, Garden Highway, Bridge Street. We have a PCI pavement condition index of 56 with approximately 90 lane miles that has a deferred maintenance of 49, 50 million bucks. Collectors, this is your Pebble Beach, uh, your Jamie Road. It's, they're a little worse shape at a 47, 82 miles at $45 million deferred maintenance. And then you can see local, um, local streets, these are your residential roads that, um, quite a few more of those roads, 338, that, that fall in line, they're real similar at about a $56 million deferred maintenance cost. So where does that stand in relation to others? And so Yuba City, um, right now we're about that 54. California as a, as a whole has an average of about 66. And so, um, we're not alone with some of these numbers where, where we're at, but, um, we're, we're definitely not at the top. So, um, a little perspective of what, what that looks like. So Bridge Street, um, it's a good, it's relatively new roadway that was placed in 2017, 2018. You have Lincoln Road, it's in this 61, this fair range, starting to see some of the longitudinal cracking. Um, it's surface is, is starting to, you see a little bit of the wheel rut happening. And then you get into this 55 range that a lot of alligator cracking. Um, you see some, and the surface, the surface is worn and it needs a surface treatment, starting to be oxidized. And then you'll start seeing some wheel ruts flowing. And then you get into a poor state where you start to get, um, you know, longer longitudinal cracks, you get more of the potholes. And then you get complete failure, which is, um, this is a section of Garden Highway that's, that's on the, the list with that recent grant to repair. Um, but this is where we want to stay away from because it, it's just complete remove and replace at this point. And, and I'll show you with the next graph of why that's so important to avoid. And so why is the pavement condition so critical? And really it's, it's this line here, it's this, it's this exponential, um, line. It's not a straight line. Um, and so you get this huge drop, this vertical drop. And, and what happens is the cost, um, just exponentially increases where if you keep good roads, good is the same. You, you could keep them maintained for seven bucks a square yard. But you start dropping here, you, you start getting into this 1875. And, and then it's the full digout and replacement, you start getting into this higher dollar range. And so your costs, um, your costs go up rapidly. And then, um, how far you could do the repairs, your money doesn't go very far. And so this is a, um, just a graphic, um, kind of, how far does your money go? And so preventative maintenance, 7.6 miles. So of that 510, of that 510 lane miles, um, you, you could go so far with a million bucks for 7.6. But as you start getting down, the, the condition starts to drop, the money just doesn't go very far. So here's just a high graphic, it might be hard for everybody to see, i- is what's going on with the city. So this was in 2019, the PCI was 61. And, and you can see a little bit more red, so 54 as time's going on, we start to see those roads starting to slip down, um, as they continue to deteriorate. So there's a lot going on with this graphic. Just want everybody, um, take it in. And so where we're at right now, 2023, our system's telling us $150 million is what's currently deferred. If, if I had, um, 150 million bucks, we could go out and touch every road and bring it into a maintenance condition that was good. And so here's the pavement condition is a 54. And then what this green is down below is how much money we're allocating currently, about 1.5. And so if we continue this trend, what, what you see is you see the pavement condition to go down. And so in 2033, we're expecting it to be 32. So we're going into that poor range. And then deferred maintenance is going up to 376 million. So just a graphic of, of where we're at and where we're trending. So key takeaways. Current condition is fair, we're trending poor. The road conditions will continue to deteriorate i- i- at the level that we're spending. So a million and a half dollars, um, it just doesn't keep up. It doesn't keep up with the, the size of our, our, our network and our road maintenance system and where they're at on that pavement condition index. It's not enough money to keep them where they're at. And so they will continue to decline if we don't find a way to, to maintain them, spend some more money to maintain them. We're projecting right now, it's about 11 and a half million dollars annually, um, additionally to, um, uh, keep it where we're at. And then, um, with the city actively looking for grants or doing things. But this is, this is real ongoing money that needs to be spent on that network. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions about roads and pavement condition before I hop into utilities.
Through the mayor. Ben, thanks for everything. I'm, I'm going to start on roads, uh, while we're here to just reiterate what you're telling us about the cost. So, I mean, you can go back to the, the other slider. That one's perfect right there, the 7.6. That's a realistic picture and it's not something that, that we just picked out because it, I wasn't thinking about it till we were sitting here tonight. But while I was back at our ranch, the city council of a city that's a little bit smaller than us did a road, uh, maintenance for 20 miles and it was 1.1 million. And so that is, you know, California inflated out here, that, that is realistic of what can be done if they're really kept up. So we know we've got a major problem. Um, I just, where's the money going to come from? States pretty much cut our funding. Uh, we don't get everything we need, uh, from that. Uh, I don't know if you factored it in or not, but you talked about the money that comes from the transit allocation. And you know, the transit authority is going to start taking more because they have to convert over to all electrical buses and everything. We've seen those numbers with, uh, Mr. Martin and he sent those over, I know, to Spencer. Cause the numbers are going up and out of the whole area, we carry the lion's share of that. I think that the actual allocation of what we fund Yubasitter Transit out of that fund is about 50 to 54% I believe is what comes from the city. Um, so I just, that's real. If we take care of our roads, it's a lot more cost effective. But my question gets back to you, you're talking about the, uh, the workers and the ad hoc, um, has recommended we do not hire the extra people for the, the cleanup, the city crew. Is that correct? Okay. Um, when we had those workshops, um, you were, uh, and it may have been at the other workshops where you're talking about the homeless and stuff up at the, uh, the corp yard and those things. But we were talking about the people being called off the jobs and we're pulling those workers off of other jobs. Like repairing sidewalks and stuff, and that was taking a lot more time. How much impact is the whole homeless and the cleanup the city when we pull? What is the real impact again, that we're, we're pulling away from other jobs? That, is it still significant?
Yeah. I mean, so that number, um, in Chief Baker's presentation, I put two people, um, with the truck. You know, and, and so that doesn't impact that. So that's almost two full-time people that are just picking up garbage, going and getting mattresses, getting called off for, um, various resources, then, then difficulty planning jobs when, when they get pulled from here to there, but based on the staffing in order to do those various functions we have. And so with the team, we allocated four people to put a dent in it. And so it's, it's, and so that way we would actually have people doing the maintenance, some of the maintenance needs, which isn't, that aren't contracted out, that could be done in-house, the crack ceiling, uh, various small digouts that are associated with utility service ties. Um, and do more of the basics, getting back to, um, this huge need with sidewalk repairs. They have liabilities associated. They have liabilities associated with just the tripping hazards that we're not addressing, and where those could be contracted in-house at a cheaper cost than, than contracting it. And so we put a number close to $400,000 for the Development Services and Public Works, but you know, it could grow real easy when you start talking about the impacts associated with time and what you're not doing and the associate time value damage that's happening.
And that's kind of what I was getting at. The story that sticks out was the people with the driveway, they torn up the sidewalk, and I guess we pulled them off to go do something, and they were gone for a day, and the people were upset. That's the one that sticks out in my mind. And so there's, there's a cost factor well beyond just the numbers that's there because it's our productivity cost, and it's the extra cost and time that goes into all these projects as well. So when we look at the total cost, you know, that we really need to be doing, it's probably even a bigger number, I would say.
We agree.
Okay, thank you.
Through the mayor, could I add with the concept with the clean crew? It would be two, two-person crews in which their shifts would be staggered so that we have seven-day-a-week coverage. And that aligns with councils, multiple council goals, because then we'd be able to coordinate with businesses where we have known areas that we have issues with, you know, people hanging out or leaving trash, that they would have that on a routine schedule for coordination. It also works hand-in-hand with the homeless liaison officers and the potential positions related to that, and that you have these dedicated clean crews that can go around and also helps with, you know, the code enforcement issues, helps us to be able to respond in a timely manner to YC 311 requests. It just overall contributes to the quality of life of, of the citizens and also addresses those key goals that council's identified.
Thank you.
Through the mayor. Yeah, back to the Garden Highway picture you got there. Historically, when that was, I'm thinking that's, what, about a 25-year-old roadway when they started building?
I think that was done in the 90s, early 90s.
Okay, so maybe 30, 30 years. It seems to me that the quality of asphalt seems to be going, is going higher in cost and cheaper in quality. My street's 73 years old, and it looks like that.
I, I would say arterial traffic is impacted, it's great that you brought this up, is that we have a lot of trucks in the city. There, there's a lot of trucks, trucks substantially impact roadways compared to residential passenger vehicles, your halftime pickups, your Honda Civics, they're not doing the damage that a truck does. And so Garden Highway, large volume of truck traffic. And I, I would also say, it was a different time when, 30 years ago, 25 years ago, roads were built with, you know, diesel used to be the by, asphalt was the byproduct from diesel, the per-ton price was cheaper, they, they built the road four inches of asphalt on, on 12 inches of rock. Nowadays, that's doubled. And so when we're building Bridge Street right now, it's, it's six-on-22 with the Geo Grid fabric in there, so it really could handle those truckloads and then hold up for a longer life. It was just built to the different standard that adds to this. But, but agreed, we, I'd love to get another 20 years, 30 years before it looks like this, but.
Through the mayor, one other question because something you said just reminded me of this. The trucks are causing a lot of this damage. And you, and I'm not talking just only the arteries, but up in the neighborhoods, because we see trucks that are not consistently staying on truck routes. I guarantee you can go to my neighborhood right now, and you're probably gonna find two to three in the neighborhood, and I'm sure that's probably everywhere around. What would it take? Because this is a true cost to the city. Nothing against the, the truck drivers, they need to, you know, earn a living, but their, their equipment is too heavy for our surface streets in our neighborhoods and such. So putting you on the spot, but just a rough estimate, what would it cost, whether it's code enforcement or LE or whatnot, to have an enforcement mechanisms to get the trucks to stay out of the neighborhoods? I mean, we're talking 100, 200,000 for a couple of people, maybe? I'm just.
I mean, I don't want to speak for chief, but they're, it's hard to enforce because the way, the way our truck ordinance is written is that they could deliver to the, the most direct route to a business. And so, well, there's two types of trucks. And so there's, there's a truck by weight, and there's a truck over length, the STA, those highway terminal access trucks. And so the, the trucks by weight, your garbage trucks, your, your tow trucks, and then your Pepsi delivery trucks, they could go, per the municipal code, they, they stay on the truck route, and then they take the immediate route to their delivery. And so for being an enforcement officer, and I don't want to speak for chief, but it's hard to be the guy pulling somebody over if they don't know his destination. Now, if, if you look at the, necessarily, I'm sure we could assume that certain areas are just not, they're going to their house to park at night versus going to a business. But then you have the, the terminal access route, these sleeper cabs, 54-foot trailers, the extended cabs, they're, they don't supposed to be anywhere really in Yuba City except these really designated routes. But that's what people drive. And what we've seen is that it impacts the businesses. And I don't know, all of a sudden, if they don't get deliveries, you know, because CHP sets up shop for a couple of days and, and turns them away, they, they just end up coming back.
I, I guess, let me help clarify, what you hit on was more of what I'm after. You can drive, I mean, take Bradley Estates, take Jamie Drive, take Grab Avenue, I mean, something that's not a truck route, and here's a semi, well, the floated trailer setting there, not where it's supposed to be. I'm just looking at the cost because this is the budget thing. If we had to, whether it's code enforcement, LE, whatnot, what would it take to, to have the proper amount of code enforcement, I guess, on those to save our streets?
So it'd be a PD issue since it was on the, on the public railway. And we used to have that, we used to have a community service officer assigned to our traffic unit, and that was their primary function, in addition to taking collision reports and aiding with car seat installation events. They, parking enforcement was a big thing. And so they'd respond to complaints regarding truck parking, abandoned vehicles. And so we had a much more robust program to address blighted vehicles and things that were just an overall neighborhood nuisance. And so that's a CSO position, that's about $111,000. So with that position I talked about in the proposed BEAT 6, that position would be filtered back into our traffic unit.
Okay, and that was one that was for BEAT 6, but would that also cover?
It would, it would be assigned to our traffic unit.
Okay.
As part of the BEAT 6, because that, that BEAT 6 area, the proposed BEAT 6, there's a lot of work to do down there as it relates to traffic-related issues. And so CSO would be necessary to tackle those issues and then basically tackle the issues all over town. It's not a problem that's just dedicated to one particular neighborhood or area within our city. It's citywide, and we address those needs as we can.
So, and, because I'm just trying to drive to a number, so if we wanted to do it right, we'd probably need a couple of those positions. So quarter million dollars, I mean, we're in the budgets, we might as well get realistic with the numbers, you know, I'm thinking, do 25 for CSOs?
Yeah, two of them would be 225,000, plus another vehicle, but that, some of the emergency equipment isn't necessary, but you'd call a vehicle there, probably.
50.
With a computer, everything else, you're still gonna be 70 grand.
Okay, surround it to 300K.
300,000 dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Ben. But just to, just to wrap things up, what you're telling us with the roads essentially is the longer we wait, the more it's gonna cost.
The more it gets.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Need a break, or you may drop in, jump into utilities?
Dealer's choice.
All right. So high level, we're gonna run through the water and wastewater operating budgets. Again, MSNS, position upgrades, and capital acquisition requests. And so real high level, the water treatment plant's on the left, 36 million gallon per day treatment facility, that's where it's permitted for. Typically, we're seeing ranges 15 to 17, 19 million gallons per day during the summer averages base, but it's, it's permitted for a build-out of the city. We have six storage tanks, a 16 million, million-dollar annual budget with about 280 miles of lines, distribution lines running through the city. The wastewater plant, we have, it's rated at 10.5 MGD. It's 173 miles of sewer line, collection mains, 17 lift, lift stations running through the city, and about a $19 million annual operating budget. So comes in from the Feather River. So if anybody's been on the Feather River, it comes in at the north at our water intake structure, treats it, we, we pump it out into the water distribution system and provide water for about 19,000 customers. Through that process, we have utilities administration that, that coordinates with the customers, with the billing, environmental compliance, laboratory, and takes care of those regulatory requirements. Then it comes back to us through the collection system, through the wastewater collections, the sewer lines, those lift stations, with about 15,000 sewer connections to the wastewater treatment facility, where we make it cleaner than how it comes in, and then we put it back into the Feather River. So the water estimated revenue, 17 million. It's up a little bit from last year, and that's really what we're projecting is, is based on the change from the drought climate, is that we've, we've removed the, the drought restrictions and some projections with connection fees with building. It's, it's brought that number up a little bit from last year. And, and there's an additional approved rate increase that will take effect that plays into that. And so with the wastewater estimated revenue, $19 million, about 1.1 million up from last year. As Spencer indicated earlier on in the presentation, that there's major, major upticks in the material supplies, energies, biosalts, and chemicals. There's been some staff reports that have come to you over the last year that are, you see us doing changes to our account balances to pay for the chemicals, to pay for those energy bills, that the off-hauling of the biosalts that are just substantially increased outside of our projected budgets. And so with this, is just to take this into, into account that there's, the last year of our rate increases will go into effect this year. And with that, we're still projecting, not, we're not keeping up with those inflation factors. When you have 25% plus for energy, chemicals, labor, those rates are just not keeping up with the same pace of the, of what the costs are. So that big request earlier on, 980,000, we're really dialing in with PG&E. They put out preliminary data that talk about when these rates will go into effect. They have staggered rates where they have a 5, 8, 20%. These compounding rates that they're projecting to come into effect, it's a huge number for us. And so we're, we're trying to dial in with their, their accountants and their audit teams to just confirm what those impacts are gonna be with the city and with chemicals. And then you have vehicle replacement fund impacts, capital acquisitions. And so this has to do with the dump trucks that we talked about, the, as far as being out of fragment air quality standards, having to get that $200,000 truck, and then also a flatbed truck for water distribution. Personnel, there's no changes requested this time, there, there was, there's ongoing discussion, there's always a, a great need for, for work. We're never short on work. And so just as we go after more grants, as we address more regulatory requirements, as there's, there's different projects, big projects implemented, there's always staffing needs. And so we're monitoring that, but there's no requests this year. Special, on the wastewater side of things, again, this 250,000, it's not quite as big as, as this increase to the, the existing budget, but we've really seen it with biosalts offhaul, and then the chemical, chemicals bringing those up to date. And then we have operating budget, about $105,000 in capital acquisitions for laboratory equipment that's just out of date. It's time to renew some of that equipment and chlorination analyzers that, equipments that, that's needed to make sure we're getting the right readings, to make sure we're doing the right dosage, to make sure we're in compliance with the standards, so then we're not getting fined as, as that water goes back into the river. So any questions on the operating before I jump into this? And so before I leave the utilities, I just want to hit on the unfunded need again. I, I don't want to sound negative, but there, there's, there needs to be the discussion of these ongoing costs. And I don't want to come across that the past is, continues to kick the can down the road, but it's just, it really comes down to aging infrastructure. We have old infrastructure, costs are ballooning, and there's only so much capacity with our ratepayers, with our demographics, on how fast we can raise rates. And, and so with, you have those regulatory compliance measures that are kicking in, aging infrastructure, it just, it continues to balloon the unfunded need. And so with our recent water infrastructure update, it's projecting five to 10 years, we need about 60 to 70 million dollars to our ratepayer that needs to come in to take care of this system, to take care of that treatment plant, to take care of these lines. That's the projections that need it to, to keep things rolling. And then you get into, this is just the high level of, of the water treatment plant, and then you get into the wastewater side. And, and the wastewater side, it even gets more substantial. And so with the wastewater, as we review our current permit, we're looking at that diffuser outfall that goes out into the river. You know, these are huge price tags, we're talking $40 million for the outfall diffuser, the third digester, because where we're getting is because of the new standards regarding the, the retention time for, for how long it needs to digest, and then the ability for redundancy when we need to back up and clean it. You, you know, you have another $40 million price tag, and then this ammonia side stream. And so the way our effluent comes from the city, Sun Suite and its users, we have a high ammonia, which is, which is pushing that threshold where we exceed it occasionally, and there's a constant concerted effort at the plant, that's the main focus of the operators there, on how to keep those ammonia levels in check. And so you're looking at regulatory compliance needs and, and just plant operations for another $20 million job. So just, just on the short horizon, there's a need for $100 million in projects that's just mind-blowing. And so with that, you know, I don't, I definitely could get into strategy, we're not just sitting, kicking it down the road and hope, you know, making wishes for money. And there's, there's actively, the team's actively looking for grants, we're applying for the SRF loans, we're looking at bonding capacity, strategies on how to prioritize those needs. You know, so we're making progress, having stuff shoveled ready on, on what we could do so we're not standing still, but trying to position ourselves the best we can. I'll be answering, any questions?
Through the mayor. I think I would like to message to the rest of the council, we spent quite a bit of time with Mr. Moody talking about, you know, these, these costs. And I think he, you know, he did a real fine job of, you know, pointing out that a lot of these costs are, are costs that are either new regulations imposed by the state, and I'm not gonna say that they shouldn't be because, you know, that's, he makes a, a good point. The water that we're taking from the river is act, and when we return it, it's actually cleaner than what we take from the river. So these costs are not something that are, are really under our control. It's a matter of state regulation, licensing, et cetera. And when you put on top of that, these, these plants, even though we have, you know, we have employed solar and various things, the utility costs, the chemical costs have just absolutely ballooned. And I would encourage you to, to take some time, when, if you haven't already, to sit down to really take a look at the increasing in costs that they're having to deal with. You know, so I don't think it's kicking the can down the road so much as, as we're just responding to increasing costs of doing business to deliver quality water to the citizens, and then treating that water and returning it to the river in a, in a fashion that is, is required and is clean. So anyway, I, I, it's important, I think, for the public to understand that as well, besides the aging infrastructure as well. The chemical and the energy costs are just, they'll blow you away.
That's all I have.
Okay. We're gonna take a five-minute break, okay? Thank you, Mr. Moody.
Is this speed color box?
Yes.
It is. It's on. It's on zone.
Excuse me?
It's on zone, but they copy side.
It's on social media.
Yeah.
And, and.
Public, is this speed color box?
Yes.
It is.
Screen.
It's on zone.
Excuse me?
It's on zone, but they copy side.
It's on social media.
Yeah.
And, and.
Oh, it's crazy stuff.
Everything.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's what I was referring to was, because I was trying to drive to, what do we really need? And I knew it would be two or three hundred thousand.
Yeah. Anything you think it's going to be, times three.
That's it, but I didn't realize when I just went, dang, my mic was still on. I might clarify later.
Depending on the intensity of the meeting, you have to turn the AC further down.
Yeah, it actually feels good over here, it's warm up there.
Are you kidding me? I mean, I'm under a vent over there.
It's warm. It circles back. It feels good back here. It's a little warm up there. It feels good back here.
Little stand for that thing. I showed with it every single time.
Yeah, no, I just put it down. I'm like, it's going to fall over, it's going to break.
Yeah.
You should do a shelf set.
That's what we were thinking, you know, it'd be nice if we could get like a little shelf right here. With the water.
I'm going to get a fridge and a microwave.
Did you have a cupcake for your birthday?
Maybe on the way out.
Happy birthday.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You guys got planned tonight, or you already celebrated?
We had some. Is it beautiful up on the front?
Yeah. So, we're going to, so Dave Hager from Recalit. He is now the director of operations for all of Recalit. And the person who took his place is named Scott Ferini. And he used to be the Rego DAs of Dixon. So now he's our regional manager. So you're going to, you know Dave already, but now you'll get to meet our regional guy. We'll read up, yeah. Oh, good. I'm meeting him for lunch tomorrow. Ethan, they hired another waste zero specialist. Like Zyra turned in now for years before that.
Yeah, we bumped into them. That's who.
So, how do you guys go into this?
It's another one of these.
You've got zero public participating. How will this company live in? There. Good. I'm saying, you guys, the more intense the meeting, you make it colder in here, and colder in here, and colder in there.
Sisters College was somebody in no variety. I saw this person highlighting something.
Actually doing.
National tour.
Oh, well, you know who my favorite alumni is at that college? David Castle-Hawke. And more like a student.
Well, certainly was mine.
Same courses too. Yeah, well. Of course, college, yeah. Well, you know, when you guys move to Lakeview, I guess. You always have a birthday. I mean, I'm in Florida now. This is not a birthday. It's a surprise. Well, it actually works better for the private.
Wow.
It's a little watch. Uh huh, so.
I think so.
Yeah. Oh, I forgot to tell you. Yeah. No, starting tomorrow, I have a 5:30.
Well, like you said, you get six.
Friday morning.
City cat, city cat outside.
Okay.
We did not do. Yes. Yeah.
He's, he's a deep end.
They're just, they're just aspirations. That's not what it is. This will be a fun.
I don't think so.
You keeping, is that your surveillance video?
Yeah.
Oh, it's all those people.
Camera there, camera.
Okay. Plus, somebody comes running in, examine.
Exactly.
There you go.
Perfect line of sight.
Perfect. Did I tell you what I broke down and bought almost a month ago? I went to the rifle dinner, and I bought a day on the long range. And I bought, I won it in a raffle, and I've got a two-hour one-on-one training. I didn't have anything that would get out that far. About a 6.5.
Did you go 6'5", feet or?
Top-of-the-line Browning Hell Canyon.
Oh, nice.
Oh, yeah. So, now I've got to get the optics to go on it, which.
That's the cheap part.
Yeah, the optics are, I mean, about four grand, it looks like. But about 1.2, I should be able to see you.
Yeah. You can shoot a mile.
Uh huh.
You can shoot a mile.
Yeah. The range is a little over a mile, and it's fucking bullets like.
Yeah. They get out there.
Yeah.
You're like.
Oh, yeah, that's what I was looking at, because you got the scope, you can do the angle and the wind and everything. And so I figured, go down, let him get the scope. And it probably wasn't Leibold. Isn't that Leibold?
Oh, Leopold, yeah.
Leopold, yeah. Probably it's going to be that, or there was another one, Icclon or something like that, is what they gave him. I figured, get the scope, get to decide which one I want, mount it, take it down there, let him sight me in, and then do the training.
Yeah. Get it kind of zero.
Exactly.
To your eye. Sounds fun. Yeah, this guy's placed up in Oregon that was doing that. So like, you know, Jeremy went up there. Quite a few guys. Check out, but damn.
Yeah, I was surprised, yeah, the gun was a cheaper part of the freaking optics.
Oh, crazy. We have some night optics that.
Night optics.
We were looking at one. It was. That came for $10,000.
Hey, let's pick it up again, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the break. We needed it for comfort and for technical reasons too, so it'd be a big help. So, those were the department requests that hopefully that added some color and some information to the previous slides of the ad hoc recommendations and rejections. As we continue now, going to talk more about the, more of the big picture items, then get into the major funds, summaries of the major funds for revenue and expenditures as well. So, the big pictures we have, we are anticipating to have a balanced budget. However, we are planning to balance that budget using some reserves, just as we did in the last fiscal year to cover. So we're looking at proposed revenues for '23-'24, 57.6 million, and proposed expenditures of about 57.4 million. The council has discretion over all of the general fund revenues, starting with the reserves, sorry, starting with the healthy cities reserves. These are kept at 15% of the budget expenditures recalculated at the adoption of each budget for the following fiscal year. 15% is a minimum, and if we need to ever use these reserves, council should expect a plan to build them back up to the proper levels. Across the state, again, state of California, 15% is considered minimal. Council retains discretion to redirect and spend general funds no matter where they are. So, I've listed these other balances. While council has discretion of these funds, the funds have a purpose, and the opportunity cost must be considered. We expect to add 728,000 to the healthy cities reserve in '23-'24 to keep it at 15%. In these discretionary funds, we have vehicle replacements. So, over the years, city has put away funds to, in anticipation of replacing aging vehicles and to try to help fund new needs. There's a pension stabilization fund, which adds assets, which we would compare to the liabilities of the unfunded actuarial pension liability. These funds can be used to make additional discretionary payments. They can be used to make normal pension payments in the payroll process in times of big increases, or just to free up general fund monies. There are development impact fee loans, where the general fund loaned money to, years ago, to impact fee funds that were upside down. So, they were over, they were, some of the general impact fee fund categories borrowed money from the general fund. There's a general fund CIP, and these are monies that we utilize to make capital improvements to general fund assets. And it's also where we tend to place surpluses. And then the budget stabilization reserve, which is monies that were, at one time, ARPA funds, but have been transferred to the general fund in a category that was noted as revenue loss.
Through the mayor. Mr. Morrison, just a question, going back to your previous, the healthy cities, I know it's the 15%. But what, and I don't know where we're going to get the money from after what I've seen so far tonight, but what is our plan to really increase that? Because 15 is the bare bones minimum for healthy cities. Basic economics in a business plan, you should have three months' worth of your operating expenses or an income setting there. So that puts us more that, you know, 25 to 30%, 33% range. Have we entertained that? Or what is our goal to maybe get it there over time?
So, I think that's a, I think that that'd be the will of the council and some very good revenue outlooks. So, at the moment, every dollar we put into the reserves is competing with operation spending. And so it would just, it'd be the will of the council to reduce operation spending as, you know, it's a percentage of revenue coming in, so we could place more of the dollars that are coming through the door in a reserve. And so I'd say there's not a current plan for that, just because we're operating deficit as it is with our current spending plan.
Yeah, under the current, like I said, I don't know where the money would come from, but to my colleagues on the ad hoc, I think it's something we might look at for long term to try to get that healthy cities reserve up more, because with the numbers we floated around tonight, I mean, that's just one accident or something that hits us by surprise, and our healthy cities reserves is gone. So, if, I would personally like to see us build that up to a bigger number over time. I don't mean cut things to do it, but as far as this budget, we're running at a deficit, but I think we should have a goal to try to raise it higher.
Larger, larger healthy city reserves tend to help your finance directors sleep better. So, I would feel better myself to have a little more put away for a rainy day, but a really rainy day, maybe a floody day, and so.
We've had those.
We've had those. And so I would concur and encourage council, ad hoc and staff to be working in that direction.
Okay, thank you.
Through the mayor, I think, Councilman Shaw, I think that, again, this was another item that we had some discussion about, was the healthy cities reserve. And I think if you take a look at what we have done, and all of us, with the exception of councilperson Pasquale, and he'll have his turn, have sat in the seat of the ad hoc committee, trying to balance, you know, expenditures with the revenues that are available, and essential services, and COVID, et cetera. I agree with your desire, and I know Mr. Morrison would sleep better if we can, if we found a way to enhance that. But I think it's also fair to note that, as he mentioned, you know, there's $8.6 million in a vehicle replacement fund. That's discretionary. There's pension stabilization funds that, I mean, if we got into something really tight, there is money there. It's not the preferable way to handle a reserve, but there are some funds there. And hopefully, as things continue to hopefully turn better for the city, then yeah, I think future ad hoc committees should absolutely consider trying to, you know, move that 15% into something higher.
Thank you, and that's actually what I was thinking, because you guys have been through this, and I spent years on it with you as well, and I know how difficult it is. I think maybe before our time is all done, maybe we can put something together as far as a policy or a goal to see that move over time, and not go that 15% is where we want to be. We'd like to be at 30% and figure out how to get there over time, is my suggestion.
Noted, thank you. One last thing, I guess, just because we've talked about it, is on the vehicle replacement fund, once again, going back to the rest of the council. And we had a fair amount of discussions on vehicles being replaced. Obviously, some of them have the ability to be leased, and there still remains that interest to engage with that program. I think we're on year two now, maybe, of that program, to see again if what we predict will happen would be actually better for the city. But there are some vehicles, obviously, that are just outside of that program. So, as we continue to monitor vehicle replacement fund and whether or not the supply chain can supply the vehicles that we're interested in getting, is I think we still have an interest in trying to lease where possible. And so I know the staff was trying to figure out, okay, well, if we go in that direction, then what happens with that 8.6 million? You know, some of that have to be apportioned to the operating budgets of the departments affected by the ongoing lease payments, or how do we handle that? So, that's a story to be written.
So, we're now into the budget details. This is the general fund. I do want to acknowledge that department heads, your department heads, for submitting reasonable and responsible budget projections and proposals that fell in line with the city's current financial position. Everyone was very conscientious about their requests. So, these are the general fund revenues, shows a, this slide shows a graphic, historical and graphical depiction of the changes in the total general fund revenues over time. There are 10 years of actual historical results, and fiscal year '23 projected, and the fiscal year '24 proposed. And you can see that there's transfers in of reserves. That's the little tiny font that's often the right. But it's 3.2 for fiscal year '23 projected, and 4.1 in the recommended budget. So, I'll have to, I'll say that the 2.9 of the fiscal year projected revenues are public safety generated, and 2 million in fiscal year '24 revenue budget are public safety generated. Now, these are the largest revenue changes in the general fund. Sales taxes are expected to increase over what was budgeted '22-'23. And I have additional slide that's showing the sales tax in more detail. Property tax also remains strong by increasing $270. I will note that these, that tax revenues, well, property tax is pretty constant. Sales tax has flattened dramatically, and you're going to see that in the next slide. Permits and fees and public safety revenue are expected to decline. and fees and public safety revenue are expected to decline from the twenty-two, twenty-three projection, and part of that, part of the revenue projection change is that there are public safety revenue that come in from various events, but one of the things that we had last year was some revenue from strike team, and some other public safety revenue streams that may not reoccur, it may not happen again, they might, but it's hard to budget for those items that are not very routine. You can see sales tax, so first quarter twenty-two compared to the first quarter of twenty-twenty-one, we're actually up four percent, and that's what we've been used to, and that's what I've been reporting for the last probably two budget study sessions, however, you can see that it's really starting to tip downward, and year over year, you're seeing an increase in the negative growth, so it's, the growth rate is declining down to minus three point four percent in the fourth quarter, twenty-two over twenty-one, which is the most recent data that I have. The average decrease is a point two eight percent, so overall, in that slide, it's just, it's very flat, but, you know, the good news is, it's, we're still projecting seventeen, almost eighteen million in revenue for twenty-two, twenty-three, which is a lot of revenue, that's a lot of sales tax coming in, if you go back just a few years, we'd be in the fifteen million dollar range, fourteen million dollar range, pre-COVID. So while, while that's a lot of revenue coming in, it's flat, so expenditures are still increasing and revenue staying flat, so you're ending up with the wrong kind of trend. And then we are, I did budget for one and a half percent increase over four quarters in the next fiscal year.
You know, I got a question on CDFTA. We've had this discussion, it seems like every year, that I've been on the council. I can see the projection staying flat, but I really struggle with factoring in a increase, and the reason is, is because the economy, whether we like it or not, want to call it, it looks like a recession, feels like a recession, just ask anybody that buys gas or food, okay? Inflation is high, and people are spending less, we're watching consumer debt go up, we're actually watching consumer default on their debt go up, for example, Capital One just reported out last week, not much, but their default rate went from two to four percent, okay? Those things concern me. I think the only reason that we're going to stay even flat is just because of inflation, the price that we're taxing is much higher, so that one point five percent is only a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, correct? It's small in our overall budget, but it does concern me, I wouldn't say go back and change the budget, because it is kind of a small number, but we're going to have to be very careful over the next several years, because with our economy the way it is, I don't see those four percent year over years like we had coming, we're going to be lucky to stay even, I think, so I'd love to hear your thoughts on what you think about that at this point.
So yeah, so the, you know, when we were, this slide last year, I didn't, I didn't bring it with me, but we were, we were seeing double-digit increases, up to twenty percent quarter over quarter, and so for me, a one and a half prediction is super conservative and pretty low. One of the wild cards, I mean, I could have made it zero, zero percent, I'm not ready to make it a negative percent yet, but I could have made it zero just as easily, and that's almost the same thing to me, flat is flat. One of the wild cards is fuel's been very volatile, and so, you know, fuel prices bumped back up to five dollars a gallon, which is not, used to, when you would think about that prior to two thousand eight, you'd say, no way, never going to happen in my lifetime, that's, those are European leader prices, but, but we've seen it a lot in the last few years, and, you know, it could happen anytime, so I think there are a number of factors that could help out, we do have a very big crowd drawing facility, almost completed next door to this building in the temple, so we're expecting to have quite a bit more traffic come to the area, so call me an optimist.
Yeah, no, I appreciate your thoughts, and you just hit on something else, I mean, our leadership at the state wants all gas engines gone, so going back to Mr. Moody's presentation, what's going to happen to our road taxes in ten years? We're not going to get anything to fix the roads possibly, unless, I'm sure they'll figure out a way to tax something, they've tried to do the mileage tax forever, it's just, I think where I get comfortable with the one point five percent is getting back to the work that the city has done over the past several years of being open and open to business, because it started with the gentleman at the far end, won't put him on the spot, but that resonated, that came through, city has stepped up, and look at the businesses coming here. So I think if we really looked at it, things are probably trending down further, but because we're experiencing some growth, that's what's propping us up, so I'm comfortable with it, but I want to make sure we keep those on the radar, because that can really adversely affect our finances in the next decade.
I agree, thank you. Any other comments before we leave this slide? So these are the expenses, really expenditures trend, this is a similar slide, as we saw for revenues with ten years of history, and the projected and proposed, this is broken down for each year into categories of salary and benefits, and material supply and services, so salaries is the big gold bar, and the material supplies and services is the darker portion of the bar, and again, of the proposed spending increase, seventy-two percent is for public safety. These are the largest expenditure changes, the twenty-two, twenty-three changes in payroll that are safety related were just, just under two point four million, two point three four nine, and the non-safety payroll would be one point three million, changes in payroll overall that would be more or less step increases, benefits increases, et cetera, about six hundred twelve thousand. There are, staff is recommending ongoing material supply and services increases, five hundred thirty-four thousand, and the safety portion is just under nine, one hundred thousand.
May interrupt you for just a second, again, reporting out of ad hoc to the council, I think when you look at the changes in payroll, a significant or a good portion of some of those increases is relative to the fact that the city has been aggressively positive with recruitment and retention, so there are less vacancies than historically we have had in the past, we're able to attract the right people for the right job, and they're not necessarily going someplace else, so that's going to correlate into payroll issues as we continue, that's not going to say that we're not going to have some attrition retirements and folks going other places, but that, that occurrence seems to be lessening, and at least, that's what was reported out to us.
Yes, thank you, Councilman. So we also had a reduction in expenditures looking year to year, and that's because the, each year, staff requests one-time monies for one-time purchases that are not ongoing, and so we remove those, that's a basically a removal from the current, the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year budget, which causes that reduction, we've got some changes in internal service fund charges, and this number's more interesting than it appears, at just under ninety-one thousand dollars, because we had quite expensive fuel increases, or actually, the prior year, we had fuel increases, so there was a negative on what we're budgeting for fuel this current year in twenty-three, twenty-four, but then we also had liability and property insurance, which we don't, we don't really have insurance, but coverage, liability coverage and property coverage prices went up quite a bit, too, so the offset ended up being about ninety-one thousand, and then animal services increased, animal services, what we pay for animal services is based on the SASA budget, which was just adopted at our last meeting, and then there's some minor other charges that were expenditures that were net negative as well. So we get into one of our big payroll costs, that's CalPERS, I say in the subtitle up there, that there's, the costs are going to increase significantly, the graph shows the cost going down, that's because just in the recent actuarial report was reflecting huge investment returns, over twenty-one percent for CalPERS investment pool, which had a big impact on lowering our projected costs in that report, just in that report, and we, in turn, end up being over eighty percent funded in the general fund, in CalPERS pension benefits, however, I do expect that last year's cost increase slide is going to be more appropriate, because the following investment year was dismal, and so all the gains we made in that one year and on that one report go away, and it resets back to two reports ago, so, which is where this slide was coming from, I believe it was the twenty-twenty-one actuaries compared to the twenty-twenty-two, and so I left this slide in here, because I believe that's where we're headed, and I believe that our overall funding for pension plans will be, on average, down in the low seventies, low to mid-seventy percent, which is not terrible, compared to other agencies in the state, it's about average, and it's going to be pretty close to what the state average is, where there are jurisdictions out there that are struggling in the sixties and fifty percentile, and what, once you get below sixty percent, then that's sort of what they describe as the death spiral for pension funding, so we're well above that. So through the enterprise funds, water revenues, expenses, and debt coverage, this slide shows increasing revenues from increases in rates and anticipated increases in usage, as the drought has ended, at least for this year, the slide may look a little bit more different, differently if the drought comes back, which we know it will, just, we don't know when. So revenues are anticipated to increase a little bit as are expenses, the proposed operating revenues, revenues forecast to be three point two percent compared to expense increases of eleven point three percent, increase, increase the expenses are contributed to the decline, declining debt coverage ratio, though we are projecting the ratio to remain above one point two, which is required in the bond debt covenants, the ratio would be right here at about one point four seven. And then this slide just shows, I know it's very busy, but it's basically shows trends in CIP costs versus net revenues versus cash reserves, so CIP in the purple, you can see that those costs bounce around year to year based on projects, and the net revenues are continuing to decline as expenses increase relative to revenues, and then the cash reserves will, while we had a big, projecting a big, a big increase because of, probably because of smaller CIP outlay, we will see that, in the budget, that those cash reserves will continue to decline. Like the water fund, the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three water fund revenue budget is showing increasing revenues, yet a declining debt service ratio, increasing revenues are not quite keeping up with expenses that also continue to increase steadily, like water, increasing expenses are contributing to the declining debt coverage ratio, though we are projecting the ratio to remain above one twenty, at one point seven three, and, that's got to be right in here, so we're looking pretty well in that regard. The same slide is water with CIP, net revenues and cash reserves, so cash reserves are going to build when big CIP projects are in the planning stages, or, you know, while we're working on funding and design, and not having the outline, so nineteen, twenty, you can see the big capital outlay that followed the bonds, the two thousand eighteen wastewater revenue bonds that funded lots of plant projects to help modernize the wastewater plant. So you saw some of the capital acquisition requests that the, from the major departments in the general fund, and in the water and wastewater as well, and I'm just going to bring this slide back out just to remind you of the capital requests, the recommendations total just over two million across all funds, and the rejections are just under three million, again, for, this is covering mostly public safety, in fact, it's all public safety. These are really small, but I just wanted to include in your, and they're in your packet as well, that, just that, in general, the, just a quick look at the capital acquisition requests that were approved, the only general fund request was a streets maintenance paying one-third of a message board, you're going to see that reoccur as the district water distribution and wastewater collection is paying the other two-thirds of that sixteen thousand dollar message board. These are the vehicle replacement fund requests, you can see there's some vehicles on here, and the budgeted amount is the estimated, on the pickups and small SUVs, passenger cars, the budgeted amount would be annual lease payments, and on the large equipment, such as the type-three engine that the chief mentioned earlier, we've got the purchase price in there, the estimated purchase price, and along with the patrol cars, the same, but we expect on the heavy vehicles to entertain lease financing, which we did for some, for a dump truck, and the engine and the truck that we just purchased, and the sweeper and the sewer vacon truck as well. These are technology requests, the, all the requests are benefiting the general fund, with a hundred forty-two thousand being non-safety, and a hundred thirty-five thousand being safety, and I think it's pretty clear in here, you can see the difference, safety items on this page are battery backup for the nine-eleven server room, battery backup for the server room, the citywide server room at the police department, and video conferencing equipment for fire, police mobile, and handheld radios, which are constantly being rotated through and needing replacement. These are the requests for utilities, you can see water distribution's going to pay, plan to pay, if you approve so, one-third of the message board, and the message board makes another appearance in the wastewater fund, and then you see some chlorination analyzers for the lab, no, for the, for the plant, and then down the last four are equipment that are aging out, need to be replaced in the laboratory. So that's really the wrap-up on the operating budget, we've presented you with lots of recommendations tonight, you're going to be able to read about them in detail in your packets, and again, hopefully get back to us as soon as possible with comments and questions, and things that we can try to address at the adoption on the sixth. Some other things to consider is, in the past, we've made a, last year, we made a payment, or I should say, in the current fiscal year, a payment, additional discretionary payment to CalPERS that went entirely to our unfunded actuarial liability. The general fund portion came directly out of the pension stabilization fund, not out of operating budgets, which may seem pretty palatable. However, the other funds, they, you know, we don't ever just make a payment toward the, using general fund because we can't break apart that miscellaneous tier that has both general fund, water fund, wastewater fund, animal services fund, and vehicle replacement or vehicle maintenance fund. So the three-hundred-seventy-five-thousand would come out of those other divisions. And you saw the declining debt service coverage ratio for both water and wastewater. So this would just add a further operational burden to those funds. That's something to consider in this request. Should you decide to not make an additional discretionary payment to the miscellaneous tier of pension, there's also the, we can do, make an ADP using what we save by prepaying our annual liability payment to CalPERS. So each July, we're presented with a choice. Either make twelve monthly payments for what we owe annually against our liability with CalPERS and pay interest on those twelve monthly payments. Or we can make a lump sum cash payment upfront and save three-point-four percent. It usually ends up being in the hundred to two-hundred-thousand dollars of savings. And in the past, we've taken that savings and made a payment for all funds to CalPERS against the miscellaneous tier, which is generally considered the most bang for our buck. So that's something you can direct me to do, and I'd be more than happy to take care of that. The other thing that I'm going to ask is to make sure that we have the money we need this fiscal year to, for all the expenditures that we're proposing, is to transfer four-point-one million budget stabilization reserves to cover any budget shortfalls. And so the actual amount we need could be less than that as it was this current fiscal year because we ended up with salary savings in the current, in twenty-two, twenty-three. So some of the reserves that we transferred in in last year's budget resolution are going to, you know, come back, and we're going to be able to use those another year. So the same might happen, but I just want to make sure that we're covered. And so that's the amount that I'm going to request. Anything that's not used comes back to the general fund, and you can program it for, you know, for future years. And so other options, you know, you can, you can use funds out of the pension stabilization to pay some normal pension costs if you want free of even more general fund money for other purposes that maybe we haven't discussed tonight or to reduce the amount of money that we're putting out in reserves to cover. That pension stabilization trust is, just has to be used for pensions, either liabilities or the normal costs that get paid through payroll. And so you do have some options there as well. And then anything else that you come up with that I haven't thought of or haven't mentioned tonight as well. Any questions on those things?
Spencer, are these recommendations, are they in our packet? So we can, it can refresh my memory when we go through this?
Maybe not, but I can make sure that you get a copy.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Through the mayor. So first of all, we can make sure that these presentations are available. And then, second of all, you know, we're discussing the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget tonight, but one of the things we haven't discussed is negotiations. And we have several bargaining unit contracts that are up for renegotiation that expire as of June thirtieth. And then we also have fiscal reopeners for the remaining contracts that are ongoing. And so, you know, the picture that Spencer's painted, keep in mind that we still have to go through that process to address those contracts that need to be renegotiated, and also the fiscal reopeners.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Is this specific or general?
My next slide is a slide I led off with, just next steps. And then we've got CIP presentation by Director Moody.
Just a comment, if you can go back one slide. Your recommendation as far as to our unfunded pension liabilities and stuff, knowing that cycle all too well, why we're at a low point where they think we owe a lot less than next year's report's going to tell us, making those extra payments this year will give us more bang for our buck because it'll lower that before the adjustment comes in. So if there ever was a year with what we know is coming, this is the year to definitely capitalize, not only the prepayment, but a discretionary payment, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
So I'll present council with these options than any other options that you bring to me, you know, or any comments or other ideas. I'll make sure those are included in the recommendation, staff recommendations. And then when you're going through and discussing the adoption, then you can remove recommendations or add recommendations as you see.
So Spencer, just a point of clarification because we're proposing to adopt at the June sixth meeting. When do you need council's recommendation by? Because I know you include this in the adoption resolution.
Right, so I believe the staff report to do.
The draft staff reports are due tomorrow, but final staff reports are due a week from tomorrow. And so it would be great if council has the opportunity to discuss this tonight. And to the extent that you're comfortable to give some direction tonight, if you need further time to consider it or discuss it as a council, then we'll have to figure out how to do that and to be able to accomplish that at the June sixth meeting and still be able to adopt a resolution that addresses council's direction. And if that's the direction that council provides tonight, then we'll work with Shannon how to be able to get that maximum flexibility for what we move forward with on June sixth.
Talking just in regards to the other recommendations?
Yeah, these specific items because Spencer will spell these out in the adoption resolution. And so he needs that direction. And if council's not at a point tonight to be able to give that direction, then what we can do is try to work with Shannon to either have multiple resolutions ready to go for June sixth or try to put wording in there that provides us some flexibility and address the evening of June sixth.
I think I made mine pretty clear with, we need to do this. The big question is, is are we going to pull a half-million dollars out of general fund or pull it from the pension stabilization fund? How much is in the pension stabilization fund approximately now?
I believe it's approximately about four-point-eight million.
Okay. Looking at everything that we've got going on, the ADP, the additional discretionary payment, personally, I wouldn't pull it from the general fund this year. I'd pull it from our pension stabilization. Would be my recommendation with all these things because, quite honestly, if you put it all together, we need about five-hundred-million dollars roughly, and we don't have that. So let's, but we need to make that payment. So from one of five, I would say, make it pension stabilization fund, prepay as we always do. And then, of course, we need to move that four-point-one over to make sure that we can make it through the year and then replace back whatever's left at the end of the year. So I'm just one of five, but that's my thoughts.
So when you say you need council direction, you already have the direction from the ad hoc. What you're talking about is the balance of the council.
So we need the council to provide direction to the finance team tonight as to these specific items so that they can include that in the adoption resolution.
Okay. I'm comfortable with what's up there if it's going to save us money in the long, in the long run with the pension liability. So I'm comfortable with that.
Comfortable with what? All of that? So just to clarify, you're recommending all of those or is this options that you're recommending?
So there's options. I think we had quite a nice discussion about them in budget ad hoc, and there's definitely another view. And I, hopefully, I presented that, that other view, especially in bullet point two, which impacts bullet point one. So we wouldn't, we wouldn't take five-hundred-thousand dollars of general fund money, which is what the pension stabilization trust is, and make an ADP without also taking the equivalent amount of money out of the other funds, which is the second bullet point. The other, the other funds are, would be water, wastewater, Sasa employees, and vehicle maintenance, which is, you know, in the future, be prorated, you know, by a number of employees and such.
Yes, clarification. What I was saying earlier is I liked everything up there, but I wouldn't take half-million out of the general fund. It would come from the pension stabilization to leave us half-million for what's facing fiscal labor negotiations.
Through the mayor, I think also, and Spencer, please clarify, the prepaid savings, we were going to, there are options where that money gets applied. Is that correct? Or is that just an offset? So there would be, if we paid monthly, there's an interest cost, basically. If we pay prepaid, which makes sense, then there's a savings. So is the five-hundred inclusive of the savings? Or would we realize some savings from the preplay that we could, we could push back into the pension stabilization?
So in the, in the past, Councilman Boom Garden, we've done all three of the first bullet points. But there's nothing that says we couldn't offset the eight-hundred-seventy-five-thousand in the first two by whatever the savings is in the third bullet point and still do the eight-seventy-five.
That's, that was where I was at, based upon our earlier discussions.
So I guess the question that, you don't want to use the pension stabilization fund for anything right now, then?
No, we were using the pension stabilization fund, but there was some savings if we prepaid, and I was going to program those back wherever we want to put them.
Okay, I think we're on the same page, but what's throwing me is the slide because it says ADP to CalPERS, half-million general fund. Should that be, that's coming from the pension stabilization, correct?
The hundred percent of the pension stabilization is general fund. And you have discretion over those monies indirectly, but you do. So my, I've already drafted the resolution just so I got some of the work done ahead of time, which we need to do this time of year. And it clearly states in my, in my draft, it's unapproved and previously unpresented to you, that it would, a hundred percent of that five-hundred-thousand would come from the pension stabilization.
Okay, we're just way down in the weeds because of the accounting stuff, and I'm going, okay, it needs to come from here. I'm good with what you're saying, so.
You stated it was about a hundred-and-twenty-thousand you save, Spencer, and not paying it out over the period of the year, about three-and-a-half percent?
My recollection is it's closer to two-hundred-thousand.
Oh, okay, that's even better. Okay, no, I'm with all the gentlemen. You have direction?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'm going to restate this, mostly for my team.
Yeah.
We're going to make an eight-hundred-seventy-five, we're going to recommend at the June sixth meeting, an eight-hundred-seventy-five-thousand-dollar additional discretionary payment balanced, prorated between all funds. But we're only going to reduce the pension stabilization fund by the difference of the UAL prepayment savings that's attributable to the general fund. So it won't be, it'll be something less than five-hundred-thousand coming from the pension stabilization fund. I see nods.
Yes.
Is my staff on board with that? Okay, okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
And the bullet point four? Is everybody a nod on bullet point four?
Yes.
Okay. So this is, before we get into CIP, this is the, this is the chance to give me, to have further discussion or give you further direction on the operating budgets. Hearing nothing. Next steps, again, review proposed budget document this week. Please return questions, comments to staff as soon as possible so we can incorporate them into our presentation and facilitate any discussion. But the items, the recommended items that you've already given regarding the ADP and the transfer were very helpful, so thank you. Now, without further ado.
Can we go back one slide?
Still the pointer.
Okay, so this is a pretty thick document, and what I've done is broken it down really to talk about notable changes for this year. And so thank you, finance team, for working with my team. There's a lot goes into it with the various funding sources and, and working on the timelines. And so that's probably the takeaway when, when staff worked on this, is really to streamline this budget. It was really to look at it, what's, with the limited amount of funding, how do we prioritize it to meet our needs for regulatory requirements? And then also, what can we realistically deliver? So actual needs that need to happen, and then also what staff capacity is that we have. So we don't have, so we cleaned up some of those projects that we want to get done, but realistically, we're not working on. So we shifted funding around to really try to maximize reserves where we could and then program funds that we were going to get off the books. And so the way the CIP is broken down is it's broken down into different project categories, general facilities, community services, safety, streets and roads, water, and wastewater. And so I put a little, I probably like this more than anybody else, but really, it's the funding sources that come in. And so there's these various, this is really what makes the city turn. And so in engineering and through our departments, these are the funding sources that come into the city that we then program to make things happen and get built. And so the couple of big ones, you'll see in bold, the few big ones here. And so Transportation Development Act, Streets and Roads, that was that four-million, four-point-three that we showed coming in. You know, it's part of it. Obviously, there's other funding sources, recology and different things, but these are the big highlighted ones that are coming in, that are being programmed. And then you have the water and wastewater funds that are the majority of the funds that are coming in through the CIP that engineering and the teams are using to fund projects. No general fund, one-hundred-and-thirty-two. So really, when you're talking infrastructure, twenty-million-dollar needs for a fire station, one-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand, really, it's peanuts when you want to get something done. So just to kind of put that in perspective. So these are not, there's many projects in the CIP. What I've again showed is some notable ones with some changes or new. And so the property abatement, we highlight this one. It comes up because of the, what we wanted to show is we were reflecting a CalRecycle grant we're anticipating receiving. That's about a hundred-and-seventy-five. And then there's a twenty-five-thousand-dollar general fund cost in there. Typically, we fund it with about fifty-thousand general fund. We reduced it to twenty-five, but we were able to offset it with the potential success, the pending success of that, of the grant we're hoping to acquire. General plan, so this is a big one. This is notable because what this is, is there's a project account. Is general plans are expensive. In general plans, they're really the guiding document for development, for how the engineering calls out road designs, how big the road needs to be, and how development is implemented throughout the city. And so these general plans are required. They have various elements, and they have to be updated, regulatory-wise, housing elements, zoning codes, general plans. And so the city's working through right now, Doug and his team, through, we received some grant funding, about six-hundred-thousand dollars over the last few years to update, that we're using to update the general plan. update the general plan and do some zoning element updates. But what's really happening here is that these things, they get expired. What we're doing is we're putting a paint job and new wheels on a 2004 document, and it only lasts for so long. So we, we're updating it, and it's, and we're going to try to get another 10, 15 years of it, but sooner or later, you have to pay the piper and there are two, three million bucks. And so what we've historically done is put about $100,000 into it a year. So when we get to that benchmark in 10 years, when we need to do a big study update, we're not hit with a $2 million bill all at once. And so what's happening here is that, what's notable is we're defunding, we're taking $400,000 out of the general fund money to help program some of these offsetting costs in the, in the, in the document. Citywide Acela, 112,000. This is, majority of it's about 60,000 plus for a solar grant that was helped to implement online solar processing and then coordinate some infrastructure improvements. I shouldn't say infrastructure, programming improvements related to software. And so as we convert from old Pinimation software to Acela software, there needs to be some programming and some, some modifications that we put in there. So facilities project, this is notable to me because it's zero. You know, so this is not typical. And so what stands out is that historically, city hall improvements, we usually put 150,000, $50,000 every year into this because we have buildings that need to be maintained from roofs to door maintenance, to carpet, to tables, you name it. And so what's, what's big in this is that it's zero this year. And so based on priorities, the need to pay for other requests through the document for those general fund dollars because they're not related to water or wastewater or a road infrastructure, this is where those, that's really been shrunk. And so we're utilizing, there's existing fund balances in there to get us through the year, but items such as replacing the metal cap on the council chambers, you know, various, various projects are not being funded. Community service projects, you know, it's not a proud moment to defund a park, you know, that's part of the quality of life and community. But with this, it is, through this budget, there's a recommendation to remove $190,000 and reprogram that for a need. Safety projects. And so these are new projects that the police chief has hit on regarding fire station repair and renovation needs, PD evidence storage building at the police department, at 522, half of that was grant money. And so half of that is the general fund money. And some of this money, where it came from was defunding those two other items from the general plan and the dog park in order to handle that. And then you have the fire station training grounds, which is notable. Streets and roads, some of the big projects here, how we program that money coming in there, we're planning for a road rehab, we'll probably combine that with the residential rehab money. We have two different accounts that it's based on the funding source regarding recology fees and how things are broken out, but a lot of times, we combine the project when we put it out, depending on how we do it. And so then, and then you have Tulley Parkway, really, this goes back into prioritizing, streamlining money. We had $500,000 sitting in there, but realistically, we weren't getting it off the books because right now, where our staff is at with capacities, we're working on Walton, and then we're working on Garden Highway, with ultimately, this is on our books and it's still an existing project, but we, we're moving it around based on timing so that money's not just sitting there and we're going to put it to use. And then road maintenance rehab, this is that RMRA money that comes in through, and really what this is, we put it into a separate CIP, but really, it's a piggy bank that we're building up that's going to be used for Walton. And so with that Walton project, we're expecting a price tag that exceeds the grant amount, that, that match that I talked about earlier, and that's where that's planned to go. Water CIP, quick picture of the current well that's being, that was, that was bored and then drilled, and then now, right now, we're working on the top end of it. And so with that theme, staff worked with engineering, with the water treatment plant, with staff, and then prioritized what needs to be delivered. And so from the alum tank to water treatment basement improvements, flow meters, the aquifer storage recovery system, and then we've got some, some distribution line work here on Richland Road and Spiva Avenue that we were just successful with a grant for that amount. And then the wastewater diffuser, or wastewater CIP, here's a picture of the diffuser, the existing diffuser, with talks about the new one. We heard recent news that efforts to get that into the SRF funding program, our pending success, we've heard that we're recommended to be added on to the list, but it's for a loan. And so, you know, we're excited to see some progress because it ultimately could mean savings for the city if we go to that, but it's still a loan, a low interest loan that still has real costs to the ratepayers as that project moves forward.
Ben, can you go back a slide? And it still doesn't cover the full 40 that you think the cost on that's going to be correct?
Correct. It's 35 to 40 million dollars. We were hoping for principal recovery, principal forgiveness on this for, to be qualified as a disadvantaged community. At this time, we're still going back and forth with the state. We've heard some, some discussion that we did qualify, but then when the funding recommendation came out, it didn't show us allocated any principal forgiveness money. So we're still working with them to see if we could reduce that amount that would be part of the loan if we go that direction. Here's what we really nailed down for some of the priority projects that were funded. The ammonia side stream, start the design. We believe that's going to be a regulatory requirement about how we implement a new process to deal with ammonia. And so we wanted to at least get the design started because it takes time to do that. And so then we're ready with some sort of strategy on funding. Anika Lane collections, we have just old lines out in the road that need to be repaired, dug up and reset. Pond maintenance, how we're structured right now with the diffuser and the river conditions, there's ongoing needs for the maintenance of the ponds across the river. And then we have some different recycled water preparation studies, and we're hoping for matching funds and to position ourselves for grants for other projects that are coming down. And then a septic hauler station. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions about the CIP.
I think we're good, sir. Thank you.
So Mr. Mayor, staff has no further information to present. I do want to let council and the public know that the coffee and the sandwiches were products of a generous donation, or funded by generous donation by members of the public. And so, so the city didn't bear the costs of these energy foods that helped us get us through this three hour meeting. So just want to mention that.
It was nice. It was nice of the public, yeah, absolutely. Okay, well, thank you again, staff, for all the long hours, and there's some faces out there that look like they need to go home, go to bed. So thank you for your time. Staff needs notes, and anything changed on this needs to come in within the week, Spencer?
Yes, please.
Okay. And council understands that? All right. Well, if there's nothing else to add, this meeting is adjourned.